Okay. It is six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. And we'll start with Ms. Erdman, who I assume will throw it off to Mr. Hershey.
Actually. No, actually, let me log into the.
He hopes not.
Log into the.
Oh, Ms. Erdman's riding herd on on the recycling? Oh, my.
Yes, Mr. Ferrier is out of town.
Oh, that's right.
So I, actually, I am going to turn it over to Derek. Ranta with Waste Connections, and we have a presentation that will go.
We bet a month ago on Zoom, was it? Yes, sir. It's a pleasure to have you back. Not a worry. We're trying to understand this.
That's the big one.
That's the, and what size is that?
Will you let me into the meeting, please? I need the password.
And that's our current.
Um, where do you want me to stand over there?
Yeah, the podium would be great.
So, yeah, thanks for taking time. I'm Derek Rant and District Manager of Waste Connections in Clark County. I've been with the company for about twenty years now, about the last seven or eight in Clark County itself. So we did a brief slideshow to put together some information. I was here earlier in the month and heard some of the questions. We wanted to try and address that and any other questions you might have. About anything you want to talk about. This is, you know, specifically about the recycling contract. But I think it does kind of bleed into some of the other services that we provide. Through the county and hearing some of the things that have been said by council, might be some additional things you want to consider as well. So where do I point?
Point at this computer if it'll work. I will, I.
You can. So a couple of things, I just did a kind of a quick update for you. So you'd remember where we got to, how we got to this point, or some people may be new to council, but. In twenty twenty one, and in twenty twenty and into twenty twenty one, we had worked with an expiring contract with county staff. On a long term extension to the recycling contract that we had in place. Contract originally was rolled out in two thousand nine. As part of the new commingle carts, previous to that, it was a three bin sort system, but the entire county went to the modern service type, which is the commingle carts with glass on the side. The county provide provided Waste Connections with a notice of intent to extend the contract. And that, at that point, we developed the plan with county guidance to go to an every other week service model. Waste Connections went out and purchased ten new trucks to service this contract. It includes. You know, the interlocal agreement, so includes all of the urban growth areas, battleground, the center Yakal. All the single family and multifamily dwellings in that service area. To no fault of anybody currently here, the county staff, I think, got a little out of sorts on how things were approached. They provided a notice of intent to Waste Connections to execute an agreement. We were capital and move forward on that understanding. Proper steps probably were to come to the cities first, prior to giving that notice of intent, and that's that step was skipped. But we're here now where we are, and I think current staff. With Clark County, they've had a couple of different people go through the solid waste management position. The current person in that role really didn't. You know, drive that. She's trying to land this arrangement and figure things out at this point. So staff did come and last year in twenty twenty two and approached the city, so went to each city council. And the message was consistent, you know, why, why didn't you come to us before this? Why are we now hearing that we're going to every other week, every other week recycling? In a couple of months, it's really late in the process. So the county and the cities all agreed to extend. The existing arrangement of every other week recycling for one year, which was to June thirtieth of this year. The cities were given the option to go to every other week recycling or stay at weekly recycling. If if the weekly recycling was the choice, then there was a two dollar premium that was added to the rate. And that was basically kind of a ballpark figure that we had negotiated with county on a new contract if they were going to say it weekly. The reason for the big premium change, if you guys remember, is that trucks cost doing business, everything else has just increased that much over time. From two thousand nine, when it was originally negotiated, the contract's been increased by the CPI, but that just hasn't kept up with. The doubling of costs of a lot of the trucks and they they put in a good life, but those trucks were thirteen years old at that time, and most trucks in our industry last about ten years. Battleground chose to stay with the two dollars a month. Yakold and the center did as well, and then they have since Yakol has made the decision to go back to every other week. So they're going to join interlocal agreement and go back to every other week service. The center is the twenty eighth of this month. They're gonna meet and we'll discuss it with them. We're supposed to meet last week, but they got delayed, or this week they got delayed. So we'll meet on the twentieth to discuss that. And then here you are, and June thirtieth is the deadline. It could certainly be extended out if you needed more time to discuss it. And Rob and. The county staff have discussed what that might look like. If you wanted a thirty or sixty day extension, that's not a problem as well. And the other thing I put on here as a note is that, just to remind everybody, this impacts the recycling contract garbage in this area is. Governed by the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, so you're involved in a statewide program at that level. But there is an individual contract for recycling that covers, you know, like I said, the urban growth areas, the rural areas, battleground, the center, and Yakal, and the same for yard breed. There's separate contract for yard breed as well. That's kind of the history of where we got to. So some of the decision points, we can go to the next slide. We want to look at is in what we've talked, talked about the city at this point is there's really. There's multiple decisions, but we've kind of come down with two preferred decisions. So option number one. Is to maintain the weekly collection recycling you have right now. You would stay with the sixty four gallon cart. The city battleground would be along with Camus, the only two areas that have weekly recycling service. Everyone else has moved to every other week service. The, if you were to stay with a weekly recycling contract, the county has said. That you would need to leave their interlocal agreement because they're in a local agreements for every other week service at that point. Because, you know, we've already invested the capital into the system, the the logical step would be to. You know, provide a contract to waste connections for eight years, industry standards, about ten years, again, match that capital investment. And then we said eight years because we bought those trucks in twenty twenty two. So the new contract started in twenty twenty four. First two years already done, we would ask for eight years, end to eight years, you can go out to bid. And bring in any hardware that you want, but because we've already invested that capital and have some legal documents in place, you know, the logical move here is to extend for the eight years at that point. And I put a note on here that the estimated rates, we don't know yet what the what the rates will be in twenty twenty four. We, in all of our other contracts in Clark County, we use a consumer price index adjustment. Currently in battleground, the rate per month is nine dollars and seventeen cents. So I just did a little bit of research, and this number is obviously changing with new CPIs coming out, but, you know, it's looking at the numbers that we use about a six percent increase for next year. Which would put the city at. Another, so it puts you at nine dollars and seventy five cents. The other pieces on here you should know is that the county in every other week service areas is currently at seven dollars and forty cents. So you're paying a, I'm sorry, not seven dollars and forty cents. They are at. Well, a little, a little less than two dollars. There, there's someone, we're in the seven dollar range, that two dollar difference that we talked about. If the county or if the city to go to this, every, or to stay with weekly recycling. You pull out of the county system, which obviously spreads some of those. You know, those depreciation costs, some of the other physical costs, the call center, all the different services, they're spread across. In the current contract over seventy thousand homes, you're reducing it to seven thousand homes, and that economies of scale plays out in anything we would bid. So there's about a fifty cent premium that goes along with that. So we did the two dollars, assuming you guys are going to stay in. If you pull out, it would be two dollars and seventy five, seventy, two dollars and fifty cents rolling into next year. These are all things that would be negotiated with county staff, or excuse me, the city staff as we work on new contracts. So those aren't hard and fast numbers, but just kind of ballpark, you're looking at about two dollars and fifty cents. For weekly recycling overweight would pay in. In twenty twenty four, and I put just some quick pros and cons here that I thought of.
Yeah. I just have a question. When you say that, like they invested, who, who, people that invested? Wouldn't it be us too that we already invested in the system, or do you not collect fees for that?
Yeah, I mean, when I say invested, Waste Connections purchased the assets in twenty twenty two, the trucks. And additional cards and everything else, with the assumption we're moving to every other week system. So, and then that investment is paid back over the ten years through. Fees that the customer pays. We're just like any, any other business, so.
But those are, those are same assets that you're using at the county or other, other areas of every other week, right? You're not using special trucks for battleground.
We are using two trucks in battleground every, to fulfill that weekly requirement, we had to purchase two trucks just for battleground. So two trucks weekly.
So two trucks is servicing all of battleground now?
On recycling, yes.
And they're not used for anything else?
No, not currently, and we probably need to add a third truck next year because of the growth that you've experienced. I hear we talked about, you know, if you stay with weekly, what would that look like? We'd probably have to add a third truck at this point.
So we haven't been paying into this this whole time, like with the rate structure, where capital?
Yeah, so, so. If you kind of go back in time to twenty twenty two, that's what we're using as the kind of the beginning of what would have been a ten year contract. So theoretically, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, you have been paying into that return on investment for those assets. And that's what we're saying, twenty twenty four would start, it would be an eight year contract. You got twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three already in the bank, you paid towards eight more years on the contract that would allow us to return the right, you know, the reasonable rate of return on those assets going forward.
One more question, sorry. How, how do they get revenue?
How to see your revenue?
Waste connection.
We build the customer, so we, the nine dollars and seventeen cents a month that's paid for recycling right now. Is collect, billed and collected by Waste Connections, it directly to the customers, not through the city. And we collect that, those funds, and they're, they're. What is used to pay back for those assets? I mean, pay back the bank or whatever, whoever we finance the trucks from.
Okay, so they're financing these things? They're not paying for them? Okay, so.
That doesn't matter. Yeah, that's kind of beyond, beyond it, but any, any large, we're a public corporation.
Right.
And so at times we finance debt, you know, to pay for assets. It just kind of depends. Sometimes cash flow is used, it depends on what's going on at that moment. But in general, you know, a business earns a rate of return of. Now, ten percent operating income is kind of the industry standard in solid waste, and that's what we peg to is about ten percent of operating income. That's the UTC, the state regulatory body for solid waste, that's what they use in their models, and we use a similar number of models. So I put together on option one, just some things that we thought of that were pros and cons. On the pros list, you see, you know, you maintain your current service level, which everybody enjoys, it allows the city to negotiate its own terms. We can freely negotiate a contract for those eight years. If there's other things the county or the city really wants included in the contract, we can discuss those. And in that frees you up to do that, frees you from the county. And then, like I said here, the last one, and I heard this a couple of times, that it does allow you to remove yourself from the interlocal agreement for the recycling contract. And if you wanted to, there's a yard degree contract that also services Clark County. And battleground that you could bundle with the recycling contract, do one contract for both those services. That might bring that fifty cent number down a little bit, where you have a little bit of a discount, just because, again, we're spreading costs over a little bit larger base. On the negative side, you know, there is the two dollar eighty five cent potential premium heading into next year. You wouldn't receive that benefit of scale from the county. And again, you'd be the only community besides Camus, and then city staff would have to manage a contract, whereas right now. County staff manages the contract, but because the city, we have to do it, it's a fairly small contract. I don't think it'd take a ton of staff time, but it is something to consider, in my opinion, that they would do that.
Yeah, one more question. Well, two questions. So the two eighty five, is that in addition to the two dollars that we're already paying extra?
It includes, yeah, so like my rough estimates say that every other week service next year is going to be about seven dollars and forty cents. If, if we just renegotiate a new contract with Battleground, again, negotiations have to take place, it would be somewhere around ten dollars and twenty five cents. So that's the two dollar eighty five cent premium, which already includes the two dollars that was added in before.
Okay, and then it's so, is it not worth it for Waste Connections to do weekly service, making extra money off of us?
Well, we're not making extra money. We had to buy an additional truck. Think about it this way, if we weren't doing. Weekly service with two trucks, we could do every other week service with one truck, and so we had to purchase another truck. That's the reason for the premium on that.
Okay, I guess not getting, so you had to purchase another truck. How have you been fulfilling it this whole time?
With the two dollar premium that you've been paying for the first two years.
Right, but up until now, you didn't need extra trucks, did we?
Well, we were servicing it under the old contract, and so. Battleground was actually done on, if you guys remember Battleground, it's always been done on one day a week, it's always been on Fridays forever. But the city has just grown so much that we needed to restructure the entirety of the county and spread battleground out five days a week. Which allows for better go backs, like if a customer's missed, we can more easily go back and get the customer, provide a little bit better level of service than we were doing when everything was on a Friday. So, so the reason for that premium was just that, that additional truck. And labor and everything else that goes along with it, you know, we have to put a driver out in the field. And everything else, maintenance to fulfill the, the service needs of the truck.
Yeah, I guess I'm just confused because you were able to do it before.
On a week, yeah.
Under the old contract, so our treatment.
It's the, the huge.
So garbage bill was paying for all the trucks on the young contract, but whole county went to every other week, they have to purchase another truck to help. To do.
They, but they're doing it even less. I don't understand.
Well, but their, their trucks go out of life, they have to purchase new trucks, so they purchased a new fleet of trucks to service the contract.
Less service.
No, you're, you're, you have it compared to the county contract, not to what we're doing.
Right.
And the other thing to consider is when that, those trucks were bought in two thousand nine, I, I think they cost about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. To replace those trucks now is about a five hundred thousand dollar investment, I think five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars heading into the next year. And so, you know, our, our contract compensated us at the CPI every year, which is on average about two, two and a half percent, certainly been a lot more the last year too, but. If you take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over twelve years for two and a half percent, I don't know what the number is, but it doesn't come close to reaching. Five hundred thousand dollars. So there had to be a natural step up at some point, whoever the service provider was, was going to have to have a natural step up. You know, any vendor is going to want to get a reasonable rate of return on the contract, and that, that cost of that asset, not to mention labor has gone up, has outstripped CPI and everything else over the years.
I, I think what Councilmember DeRochers is intending to say, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but at some point. At some point, the entire county and all the municipalities within Clark County were on every week service at some point.
Except for the city of Vancouver.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and actually.
And rural, I'm sorry, rural, rural's always been every other week.
And camps.
Yeah.
But at some point, everybody was on the weekly service, and so there was a decision that was made. At some point to, by either your entity or the county or jointly. To have a new contract come up and to do every other service, every other week, rather than just. Acquire new, acquire a greater set of assets to meet the demand of the weekly service.
Correct, and, and the county, I'm not a county employee, so don't quote me on this, but I believe the decision making process in the county was. You know, as, as we had some initial discussions, you know, it wasn't going to be the two dollar premium, because again, you're a smaller community, if you spread that out, maybe it was a dollar fifty or something like that, a dollar, a dollar fifty. They felt like they wanted to not have that cost increase. So regardless. If they had gone to weekly or every week, it was gonna, there was gonna be a, I'm sorry, if it stayed weekly, there was gonna be a price jump one way or another.
When did that happen, you know, Ruxton?
Yeah, so, so the original contract, again, in two thousand nine, it was a ten year contract, so it ran through twenty nineteen. The county extended it, extended it, extended it, extended it. Those extensions should have ended in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. But the county wasn't able to make their decision up on what they wanted to do, and so we extended it a couple more times. So twenty twenty one into twenty twenty two is when they, they issue a notice of intent to Waste Connections, and that's when they said. We're going to go to every other week service. So the thinking was, save the dollar to two dollar increase to the customer. Less wear and tear on roads, less congestion, environmental impacts, those kind of things. That was their decision tree that they use.
And that decision would have ultimately, ultimately been, been made by the county councillors, the elected county councillors.
And you as an interlocal.
So I'm just saying that, that what you just described would have happened by the county council.
Yes, and I know, you know, again, I'm, I'm not a county employee, but I know there was a lot of discussions and a lot of concern at the council level about. Impacts on rural communities, impact on the cities, you know, the county pushing stuff on the cities. But I, I can't tell you where we went from there.
It's the same viewpoint by many people. I mean, they, they have a particular viewpoint on how things should work, and many municipalities don't necessarily see it that way.
And that, that may be why it was punted, you know, there was just fear of having that confrontation, I'm not sure exactly, so.
Well, what is the risk of going to our own interlocal agreement? Is it substantial cost?
Or?
Well, as we, it's indicated, though, costs will go up for the citizen because we'll be every week serviced, and then it will take the contract into the city staff's hands instead of being dealt with at the county level. Which my guess is, so it'll be the negotiation of the contract, and then my guess is any complaints and so forth that come. Forward regarding that would now go to city staff rather than the county staff.
So. Would it be two dollars and eighty five cents if we did it ourselves, or this is just if we stay with them and continue with the weekly? Like, we would have to.
This is if we continue with them and just.
Okay, but if we have our own contract?
Yeah, that's.
That's what this, that's what this option one is. You would have your own contract for weekly service. It would be two dollars and eighty five cents more than every other week service was, but it'd only be about fifty cents more than you're currently paying. Because, again, we gave that two dollar premium, we just threw it out there to kind of get us through the year. We, again, we had already bought those trucks, so that fifty cent, that two dollar number originally was just a ballpark, now we'd sit down and negotiate a new agreement. And I'm throwing out two dollars and eighty five cents, not knowing what the final number might be, but it's somewhere in that range. But it wouldn't be an additional premium on what you're paying. You're already paying nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Which is approximately two dollars higher than the rest of the.
They get less.
What was option two?
So, yeah, next slide, option two would then be, you would sign on to the interlocal agreement. You would go to every other week service, you would use the ninety five gallon cart here. And you would, yeah, sign under the interlocal agreement, just the same as that, and the center I put on here, but we don't know yet which direction they're going. The county has offered a, it's kind of an oddball, but a five year extension with two, two year extensions to, again, get us out to the ten years that we were looking for originally. Estimated rates for next year would be seven dollars and forty cents for every week service. And then we would free of charge, anybody who wanted to move to the ninety five, we would swap that out for them. And additionally, if people need, if they want to keep their sixty five and add a ninety five, or keep their sixty five out of thirty two. We've got different variations of sizes that they could do. They can have two ninety fives, you can have as many carts as you want essentially. Under that service and, and I, you know, I think that what we found, and it's a hard time to judge right now because the economy is taking such a step back. You know, recycling in general is down about seven percent year over year, so it's hard to know, like, how's the success of this? I'll say that the city of Vancouver has made the ninety five gallon cart work since two thousand nine, and we don't receive complaints on it necessarily. If people. Use the recycling system appropriately, then we usually can make that work. About. Fifteen percent of what goes in a recycle cart right now is not recycling. So if people recycle right, and don't put the plastic bags in there, the wet strength, you know, beer can, or beer containers, all these other things that they get that recycling right. The capacity on this has been found to be acceptable in an every week system. It's just a matter of which direction you want to go. And then one more slide here, so just pros and cons here. Again, county manages the contract under this. Staff doesn't have to be involved, it's a lower cost and alternative that allows the city provide. Price reduction to its residents heading into twenty twenty four, and it's consistent with service levels in other areas. One of the things that the county has noted also is that. You know, as, say, the city of Vancouver moves out and starts acquiring some of the urban growth areas, you know, it's easier on them to convert to the recycling system because they're already there. And then the con is you're signing up with another interlocal agreement with the county, and it's a service reduction, and there'd be some transition involved, and, you know, customers are obviously not. Excited about change, and so that's the reality of it. So I think where we're at right now, again, we're looking for a decision by June thirtieth, but there are a couple of other mechanisms we can do. I think the city can write the county a letter and say, hey, we need thirty more days to discuss. The, the county would be fine with that. And then I just summarized option number one and two again. From Waste Connection perspective, we're happy to do whatever the city wants to do, you know, we're here to be a good vendor to the city. Our drivers and our employees really enjoy working here, so. You know, you tell us which direction you want to go and we'll make it happen either way. you know, you tell us which direction you want to go and and we'll make it happen either way.
So as of right now, it's it's um it's not the entire county that that does every other week, because we obviously don't. Canvas doesn't, they do their own. The center, we don't know what they're gonna do, right? And so they may choose to do what we do or follow our our lead, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then Vancouver does.
Every other week.
Every. So there's multiple jurisdictions that that don't do every other week. Um, the roughly two dollars and eighty five cents, I mean, you can't even buy a cup of coffee at Starbucks for that.
Right.
So I I don't think that's going to be a significant issue.
Okay.
Especially for the convenience factor. People are used to weekly service, right? I mean, the size of ninety-five gallon recycling bin is large. Maybe you keep that in your garage, pretty much it heads up, and I feel like your car in there. Um, and and sick, I I don't see it as a pro in terms of the county negotiating uh the contract and taking the complaint calls. Uh, county does a lot of things terrible. And so I'm not necessarily confident that, you know, I would want to, I mean, if anything, it'd be better for us to take take that control back.
Hmm.
Um, and we get complaints on different things, and so we get complaints on that, we handle it like we normally do on any complaint.
That'd just be the contract part, right? They're still doing all the customer.
Oh, yeah.
Ninety-nine percent of the calls would still come to waste connections, you know, everyone. So if it's something severe, or they're not getting the answer from us, they want, they might approach staff. But we did, we find that we get very few calls to the municipalities themselves.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying by call is, you know, some sometimes people don't understand where the service provider comes from. It might not be the city, but they call the city.
They might think, yes, cities providing services.
Um, so yeah, I I I I mean, I thank you for very much for the presentation on my behalf. Um, I I I still, I haven't been swayed into us going every other week.
Yeah.
I still think the value's there um for the weekly service. I mean, that's it's a very, very small amount uh premium, so.
I'm actually surprised at such a little amount to continue.
Yeah, from my experience, people take their garbage recycling very serious. When you raise their rates five cents, they will call and let you know about it. So, but but it's already in built in there to a certain extent, so it's not.
Did you get calls on our two dollar increase? I didn't really hear anything about it.
I don't remember at this point.
Um, I was gonna ask, in addition to these recycling options and the yard debris, are we ever gonna get the food waste bins?
Oh, that's a good question. So um we take uh organics from the city of Vancouver and Ridgefield, they just, their their contracts came up soonest and and they negotiated and the current capacity in Clark County is at its limits. Uh, but there are a lot of state regulations coming down that are going to require more organic service, and that legislation is going to hit the ground twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So I think in that period of time, you'll see a uh inclusion of organics. It's not far away. It's just um, there's a lot of work going on right now and renegotiating and and uh rebuilding the transfer stations for expansion. As you know, there anybody's been down five oh three near CTR, it's jam-packed, and so um, we're working to expand those. And one of the pieces of that expansion would be to allow us to take more organics, get the entirety of the county, probably not the rural areas, I don't think they need nor want it, um, but uh they'll do that. The state like regulations are going to hit um commercial businesses first. Um, and so uh it's like customers who generate over eight yards of garbage have to have a organic service as well. But those are not coming for a few years, but they'll kind of tier it in eventually, get to residential populations as well.
I do have a worm bin, so.
Oh, good.
Still handling my organics.
Good for you.
Oh, Aaron, I I would be interested in us bundling the uh yard debris.
I would recommend that. I think the county, I've talked to the county, I think they would be supportive of that as well.
Not yet.
Um, but that, I mean, if you do go that direction, I would recommend that you add in the yard debris and make it one time. It's easier. It's just easier to manage everything that way, so the less point of point of point.
One question. Uh, I'm I'm an option two guy, and it's a minor inconvenience. I mean, it's not a, it's just not that big of a deal, so I'm fine with uh getting reduction costs.
Would we consider this a utility? Would we have to add another, another, it would not be a utility, so we don't have to worry about that.
Is it complicated to oversee the contract?
Just negotiating, it's just time at the table, negotiating service, and most of that's pretty much already done. I mean, based on where we're moving forward, so I I can't imagine it being too complicated or just.
No, I mean, there's there's some pretty standard service contracts. We, you know, our attorney could do it, your attorney can do it either way, but either way the municipality is comfortable with it, and then I'm sure the city has some boilerplate language that they would want included for um, anything from insurance to to who knows what, and we would make that work. It would not take very long. I would think a couple sessions would be no challenge.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Maybe you want to take the ninety-five home and try it out or anything?
It 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 won't fit in my car.
Yeah. Great, and you know, just so you also know, we are, we also have a tremendous number of educators and staff members that help with, you know, uh, at, we would allocate their resources to the city. They're already here through the county, but they are available to you. They do all sorts of different education um, from multi-families to single families to schools to, you know, all sorts of different levels of that, that's available to the community.
I do have one, I do have one quick question again. Uh, as we go off on our own and we don't get that economy of scale, when you talked about wage inflation being higher than CPI, would then a a risk of doing option one being, we would be more uh prone to increases because of those wages, because you would have more labor with with the lead with.
Yeah, so again, negotiations that take place, I would envision that it would look similar to every other contract we have in Clark County, which is um, it's tied to a consumer price index for the Seattle Bellevue is the closest market area. Um, there would probably be some sort of fuel component because we're so diesel-heavy uh in our in our operations. Uh, and then that's kind of a standard number every year. It's just, it's nice because it's hard and calculated. You can plan on it. Um, it's published by a public entity, so there's no real negotiations that go on. Typically, contracts have clauses for changes in government uh laws or different things like that. You know, hardship kind of situations, but we don't typically go aspirate increases. If it's built as a CPA contract, we tend to stick with CPI. Good years, bad years, we eat it, you know, one way or another, because we signed that ten-year agreement, and we've had to build in that risk into our model, so.
One more question. For people that um currently people can have bi-weekly service, correct? They can have weekly or.
It could, yeah, yep.
And that's something that would be continued as well?
We don't change the, we don't alter the price for that, just because it's, you know, it's it's logistically becomes a challenge if we're having to manage when people are setting it out or when they're not, and honestly, customers get a little confused sometimes on which is that, when you have your neighbors putting it out every week and you can't remember, oh, when did I put it out last? Then it becomes a real challenge. So it's not a, not a great way to run it. I think just the one flat P is the best way to, we can put it out whenever we want.
Any questions from the city?
Not this time. We just need directions so we know which path to take and where to start.
Okay, do. Well, that should be easy.
Yeah, it's always easy, right?
Because I'm an easy one.
You're good.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, what what's the pleasure?
Are we taking action now, Mr. Mayor, or?
Have, if it has to be done by June thirtieth.
We're taking action during a summer?
Yes, in this case, we can.
We are allowed to do that under circumstances, and with this, with the timeline, we can, we can make that work.
Very good.
What's our pleasure?
I'm option one.
Yes, I'm option one as well.
Big shocker there.
I'm option one.
Then Shane in the meeting?
He is not here.
Is he here?
Is he logged in? No.
I'm here. Oh, I'm here.
I'm option two. Two. Shane?
Two.
Well, we don't know where then.
Well, we'll have another council later today.
We could, we could add this to an admin at the end of the meeting and see.
We'll move it to the end of the meeting and and whomever the seventh person is will.
No pressure on the new member.
Will be.
The other thing we could do, especially if one ends up being is delayed enough till after the center's decision because of that economy of scale of the contract, and that would at least make option one more tenable.
But he already said it's not economy of scale, it's CPI, it's locked in.
No, no, no.
For this, for the starting rate, the economy is a scale of the fly, for what, twenty twenty? Because twenty twenty, you can, your base for the future of the.
Lower that fifty cent contract.
Perhaps.
The center, the center will not move the needle a whole lot, just you know.
Yeah, we understand that.
Yeah.
The county has the same angle with their contract, right?
What is that?
The same.
Just trying to give you option for option one.
Well, the county's already made their decision of the direction.
Maybe affected by.
Yeah, yeah, pulling Battleground out will impact their rates a little bit as well.
I mean, what you're talking about, the scale that we use, raising prices.
The C, the CPI, yes, the CPI is.
The county?
Yeah, they have the same language in there already.
Okay. So it's not different, just.
But but it, if we go a different route, then that means ten percent, seventy thousand people is is whom you said you picked up from. There are seven thousand of us. So ten percent would affect the rest of those people, not that we care about, shouldn't say it that way, not that we care about those people's recycling.
Right.
Uh, but it, their price will go up just just as ours will.
It possibly.
Perhaps, a a tad.
Yeah.
So uh then we'll uh make a note, we'll put it at the end, we will make a decision this evening. And uh one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I can talk to you or the or Mr. McCoy, the voted against, or even uh Mr. Roman, I mean, if we're really worried about basically minuscule fraction of of an increase. If that's really what uh has hung you guys up on your uh position, why don't we just up our utility tax by a quarter of a point? Or whatever the equivalent amount would be, so we could at least keep weekly service.
We we didn't sell, when we sold the fire contract, we didn't sell the the drop of that as being miniscule. Right? With the the bringing back on the utility tax, we didn't sell that as miniscule. We sold that as giving back whatever that was. What what did, well, we can't really say on the average what that was, can we?
Yes, a million dollars to the to the general fund. I don't know to each individual person, I'd have.
It would have to be drug out over.
Yeah.
The individual.
Yeah.
Uh, so I I I'm perfectly happy hauling this thing out twice uh twice a month. Honestly, a lot of cost. I I I'm not worried about three dollars.
Yeah, but yeah. One week the yard waste goes up, the next week the yard recycling goes up, you know, actually it might be easier to remember.
Could I have, uh, can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Kind of got me is we are now paying this fee for weekly. But now you want to do it half as much, and there's no, well, we'll give you a disc. A disc, so you are basically telling everyone that you are going to pay the same for half the amount of service. That's how I look at it, and I actually think this recycling thing has, I've been looking at it probably more than I should and asking a lot of people. And when you tell them that, no, you don't know, your price isn't, your your bill's not going to go down, but you're not going to get the same service. You can get a bigger bucket, but you're still going to pay the same price.
It would go down at least two dollars from what they're paying right now or more.
Right, but right now we're paying that two dollars.
Correct, yeah, you're paying, you're paying nine dollars and seventeen cents. It would go down two dollars to seven dollars.
So they've been paying this for a year.
Correct.
And they say, okay, so we'll go to every other week. Well, two dollars is not in in my eyes compensating half of your service. So that's why I I don't see why I would go to option two. So that's kind of, it's not just a fifty cents, but that's that's my.
If if thirty-six is miniscule, which is three times twelve, then twenty-four must be miniscular, right? Uh, i- if we're going to use the same, if thirty-six dollars, the term was the uh three dollars a month, goes up three dot, two eighty-five, three dollars a month, let's make it easy for me. Uh, and so if it goes down two bucks a month, then, okay, so there's a twelve dollar difference. Is that, am I, am I doing that right? Am I understanding what what you're what you're putting putting out there?
Um.
Get your math.
If we, there's been a lot of math tonight.
I didn't understand your math.
Yeah, if you're asking what the annual difference is between every other week and weekly recycling, it it's the two dollars and eighty-five cents times twelve. Whatever that number is.
Thirty-six dollars.
Forty bucks, yeah, thirty-six. Thirty-five dollars. You're not paying more for less, you're paying less for less.
Yes.
You're paying less.
You pay two dollars less for every other week service.
And that note, you're way too young to remember, but they used to sell a half a gallon of ice cream. They used to sell a half a gallon. Now they sell one and a half quarts, but you pay the same. So you're doing the same. It's called uh shrinkflation. So we're, you're seeing it everywhere. And so if you have a have a problem there, then a a gallon of bleach is now actually uh roughly ninety-two ounces. But I.
I I, Mr. Mayor, also too, we have, we still have the youngest population in the entire county, which means we have bigger family sizes, and so.
Then you can get a ninety-five gallon and a ninety-five gallon, is the cost, does the cost go up?
If you have two ninety-five gallons, no.
So if you get a hundred and ninety gallons of recycling, the cost does not go up. So if they are buying Amazon by the truckload, there will be room for their boxes.
Oh, maybe.
Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay, I don't want to make a mistake here.
But if we're gonna have all these bins, we need to change our code to allow recycling bins to be at the front side of the house. They're not going to fit in the garage.
We don't have a code on that.
Yeah, we do, that you have to bring up your bins. You can't leave them out there. They used to be, they can't be on the front side of your house.
You probably can't leave them at the curb, but I don't know about that.
I'd have to look, but I don't think there's anything about where they're placing.
No, no, I don't think so either.
That's a nature way thing.
That's it.
Maybe nature way.
Yeah.
Huh, well, it used, I'm telling you, it was that way, and I purposely leave mine out.
All right. Well, we'll wait till the end of the meeting, see what the, whomever the seventh person is, and see what they say, and and we'll roll with what they do.
Do you want me to stick around?
No, sir, you don't. It will be ten thirty.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, well.
We won't put you through that.
You don't, you don't.
The last time we were behind the band, and that was fun to watch.
Yeah, you you don't want to do that.
That uh band teacher, by the way, was my band teacher in high school. Well, that's so, when I was fifteen, that was thirty-five years ago.
Right.
Yeah, he was my band teacher.
Band teacher, I was.
He's fantastic.
Was the teacher when I was.
Yeah. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Greg. Uh, it is twenty minutes of seven. We'll gather again right at seven o'clock.
Give the Neil Pointe the benefit of having this presentation so they can make an informed decision.
It's gonna be one of my interview questions.
Just gonna put them on the spot, say.
That's what I just said, like, I was ever gonna.
There's a fifty question.
Just kidding.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, it's.
Do we have a paper copy of it? Yeah. It is seven o'clock, if you join us, please, for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of the United States and one nation under God and in this law. Thank you. Ms. Cameron, let's see who's here.
You. Remember Davis?
Here.
Cortez.
President.
Bowman.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor DeRochers.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, are there any additions or removals from the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to add at the end of the agenda, the, uh, study session subject of the recycling.
Is is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, moving on. Councilmember reports. Are there any? Seeing seeing none, the summer is always kind of slow. Uh, we'll move straight to the presentations then.
Right, thank you, Mayor Johnson, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Port, uh, we're going to do some recognition for the Prevent Together Dream Team.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my great pleasure to be here today to to recognize the Chief Untouched Dream Team. They, uh, I say chief untouched is primarily students from there, but there are some youth from the high school and also from Amboy that participate as well. I'll talk a little bit about the program and what they're, what they recently accomplished. Um, but the the program that you have some. Uh, experience with in the past throughout the year, they're involved in many different things with the city that that are community civic minded. Uh, like planting the tulips with the Lewis River Rotary Club or Red Ribbon Week and our Drug Take Back Events and things like that, we're always volunteers from the the dream team that help with that. So it is my my pleasure to talk a little bit more about their accomplishment they had this spring. Um. Well, I'll back up for just a second, in the fall, they attended a a a training conference. To talk about, uh, uh, and learn about strategies and ways to. Uh, come up with, uh, substance abuse, uh, prevention type of strategies. And and part of that was identifying what a problem, what a problem was, or if there was a problem. And, uh, these youth together identified the problem of connectivity, they they realized that. Uh, after, uh, kind of COVID kind of shut everybody away from each other, that there was a connection problem with. With not not only youth, but engagement with with other youth and activities at schools and things like that. So they they created a a program, uh, a project called Igniting Student Sparks. And sparks are simply what gets them excited, what is, what is your spark, what is your? Uh, what is the thing that gets you, gets you going, uh, every day, and one of the things that, well, amongst them are are things. Um, I got, one of them was, I was reading, one is volleyball, one is playing guitar. Uh, uh, esports, video game stuff, that was, they they did that by surveying the other students, so this is, this was a, this was a a coordinated project to determine a problem by surveying their peers. To to identify what the problem was. And, um. They they recognized that there was, that because of this. This pandemic shutdown and this disconnectivity, that, uh, they wanted to do something that would improve the mental health of their peers and. Create opportunities to connect with youth and and other caring adults. Um, after the survey and they they decided on several things that would be helpful, uh, they brought four H, for example, into this, uh, uh, to do after school activities. They took, uh, students over to high school to learn and and get involved with esports o- over there. Uh, they helped our SRO Officer Kinlaw, uh, initiate the the disc golf program and the. They helped our SRO Officer Kenlaw initiate the the disc golf program and the in the tournament. I think one of one of the youth was within the tournament, probably, right? Lucas, right? Yeah, he he was involved in the tournament itself. So they're very, very engaged with 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 student needs and student driven activities that will resonate with other with other youth. At the the four so at the forum, they presented their their program. Their project with just six of the members that was there was only limited to six could they could present, but there are several here that helped put that together. So we're we'll we will recognize all of them. There were six that were actually presented and the 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 team, they took first out of forty. So there were applica applications from all over state to to attend this spring. The Spring Youth Forum up at Great Wolf Lodge. And this 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 team that you will see before you just moment took first out of out of forty teams. So it was it was it's I'm very proud of their work. As as I mentioned a minute ago, they're engaged with the community and throughout the year, we see them at at different events. I see them at National Night Out. I see them at other, like I say, with the working with the Lewis River Rotary and planting the tulips and all that. So I they're very engaged with the community. These are our future leaders. These are the ones that will replace all of us someday. I am super proud that they're here today. And with with that, I'll I'll I don't know if anyone wants to be a spokesperson or not. I I told them they didn't have to, but they might want to because you would ask. Yes, sir.
So who who wants to come up and tell us what happened? At at Great Wolf Lodge? Don't be bashful. Very, very limited. We're we're not. We're we're not going to to ask anything of any difficulty.
Why don't you first introduce yourself? Say your name and what grade you're in.
My name is Lucas and I'm in seventh grade.
Thank you.
I'm Karen. I'm in seventh grade.
Thank you.
And I'm Brigham and I'm in seventh grade also.
Thank you as well. Okay, so who's going to tell us what happened at Great Wolf Lodge? Step on up there, big guy. Come on.
He got the flag, I mean.
Oh, yeah, you got the flag, then.
Um, so in about early May, we drove up to Great Wolf Lodge and spent about a night there. And in the morning of May tenth, I believe, we presented to a small room of people. And if you were to be the best out of that room, you were to present in front of the like major ballroom area of Great Wolf Lodge. And then once we had one, the smaller room, we moved up to the bigger room. And once we presented the the students and the staff voted on the presentation and eventually we won.
Wonderful.
And one thing I don't think we mentioned is that there were forty teams there, but the Dream Team was one of three middle school teams. So they were competing against high school teams from all across Washington State. And it was and they were selected first through an application process to to go on first class. So for them to be selected number one, made it through the first round, two, and then finally like the 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 whole thing was was quite amazing.
All of your old showing up seventeen year olds? You okay?
I'm sure we've heard about the experience after you won and how much other students and telling me that you've happened in tears.
I'm on forward.
So after we presented in front of like the big group of everyone that was there, multiple groups came up to us, or at least one that stuck out. They came up to us and were like, our whole group was in tears after that project. Your the things you're doing are so great. We love your work. And another group came up, I think it was after we went, we won. And they asked us to collaborate with them and we exchanged numbers and we are gonna collaborate with them, I think. What group was that? Do you remember? I can't remember who that was.
It was in the I'm on the yeah, my portion.
I can't remember who it was. I remember hearing the name. Anyways, um. Forgot what I was gonna say next.
I I also wanted to do an additional very nice review very nicely, very bad word for that. I'm remembering guys who taught me this, there's what they use in this project, not only this project, but all probably to these years. So I don't want to leave them out there, everything going and need that those back hearing adults for them, they by their sparks. I was very excited through their presentation. I watched I watched part of that on video that their presentation was really good. It was really well run down. It was pretty well followed by private.
Oh, please. Yes, sir, please.
So yes, a bias, but this is the most dynamic youth program that Battleground has, and it's not even close. What you are hearing is the tip of the iceberg. They only presented and got to present on one project, on one single thing that they did. And they won. And by winning, that means they get a large check, very exciting. And that will help them go to Washington DC next at the end of next January, early February, but not for a sightseeing tour. Part of the culmination of this, some of the other things that they have done throughout the course of the year are we are now being recognized by other entities around the state. The Dream Team is now the youth voice for the American Heart Association, for the state of Washington, for legislative efforts. We were asked by and hosted by American Heart to go up to Olympia this year for their Prevention Policy Day, where we met with lawmakers, were invited on the House floor, and a lot of other activities that these students then got to share in their voice, what they are seeing within their schools, and what impact prevention work can have. And so this is and when we go to Washington DC, we will have a true legislative experience, meeting with our state senators and representatives at the House, having a rally on Capitol Hill, doing some things that most adults don't get to do. So it's a truly wonderful experience. The Lewis River Rotary Project that was mentioned is not only a collaboration, but it's a multi-year collaboration that we have with that entity. Chief Sorenson has helped us out a lot. You've heard maybe about at Chief where we have our American Heart Association, but with Cascadia Tech and Fire District Three, where we have our CPR hands only training. Where this year, just at Chief, over five hundred and fifty students were trained in hands only CPR in two hours. That program has now expanded to Tewks Valley Middle School, where that also happened. So that meant that this year, the city of Battleground, because of the Dream Team, has over one thousand middle school students trained in hands only CPR within just this academic year. The list of accomplishments goes on. They've been on KGW News this year, The Reflector twice. For the second ever edition of the Battleground Brief Magazine, this team was on the cover of that magazine, if you saw that. They're being noticed and accomplished in many ways. The Clark County Youth Commission has reached out, wanting our students to be a part of their programming. So there's upward mobility for them. So there's there's a lot of work that they do. This was just a project that they won, but the amount of other things that this group of youth has been doing and continues to do, and now other schools are now starting programming. It's incredible. It's really incredible work. I mean, there's a history behind why Safeway has locks on their liquor cabinets, and it's because of the work that this Prevention Coalition is doing. I mean, there's there's things in our community that people may not see, but it's because work is being done, and it's worked by the youth. They're incredible. This group of seventh graders predominantly, some eighth graders, some high schoolers has did such an incredible job that it's truly amazing.
Thank you, sir.
Some of you, some of our fifth graders, they're like, yes, they're through A, A graders.
So it so it looks like you you ran into the publishing clearinghouse people somewhere along the line and and got the big check. And so what's the five? Where's the five thousand dollars going? What is it for? What will it be used for?
The five thousand dollars will be used towards what our trip and costs for Washington DC later in January, February.
Tough time to go to DC, but you'll you'll be fine. Any questions, council? Any?
His comment that I appreciate all the work you're doing for our community.
Well, well, let's do this. Let's let's bring up the crowd and and shoot some pictures.
With the big chat.
With the big chat. So.
You're gonna write a personal check to match it, is that where?
Yeah.
Okay, this this if you're a parent in the back and you want to shoot a picture, you should come forward. You should you should come forward if you want a picture. Okay, step aside. Don't get don't get the back of someone's head. Thanks again. It's a pleasure to have you.
They're kind of district farm. They don't have to.
Are you all in?
Yes.
Have a great summer. It was a pleasure to have.
You know, your past.
Yeah. Yes.
And next up, we're gonna stick with Chief Port for swearing in of a new officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. It's another I have another great opportunity. Sergeant Scott, we can come up here, please. Introduce you to our newest promoted sergeant who will take his oath of office today. It almost feels like I just introduced him, but I really did actually about two or two years ago. So Bobby Scott, he started with us at the Reserve, as you may or may not recall, back in about two thousand and three. He was a reserve officer for us then for about three years. Then he moved to La Center in two thousand and six. And actually, he was a community service officer for us too. And then in two thousand and sixteen, he went to La Center and worked there. Moved up to sergeant there. And came to Battleground in two thousand and twenty one. So just about two years ago, he came came back home to us. And we're thankful that he did in the first place. He also tested for sergeant. And and we're we're excited to promote him to sergeant. So he's his he's married to his wife Stacy. She's from here, from Battleground. Battleground High School. They've been married twenty eight years. They have three, three kids, Cassie, Keely, and Katie. I'm not sure of all that. They're all here. Are they all here? And well, so Bobby started out his life in Montana. So this was the next best name you could find, I guess, in Montana, about around eventually. So he went to Portland Community College in two thousand and four, got an associate's degree there, and then a bachelor of science, criminal justice from Aspen University in two thousand and seventeen. He has a lot of experience. Again, not not only is he is as is he a great officer, he's a great supervisor, and already brings a load of experience as a sergeant from from La Center to us. He has a lot of credentials, a lot of teaching credentials and instructor credentials that he brings to us. He's a youth support instructor for us, a firearms instructor already. We're just happy to we get to capitalize on his experience and training already. So he he came to us ready made. I'm super happy that we get to promote him to sergeant. He I I expect and hope that we have him here for the rest of his career. And we will do our best to keep keep him there. But ladies and gentlemen, I'd introduce you to Sergeant Bobby Scott, and he's gonna take his oath of office.
Before he does that, please take a moment and what what the chief didn't cover, let's 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 he let's roll with that.
He did a pretty good job of covering it. I started here in two thousand and one as a reserve, and then in two thousand and three became the community services officer. And then through life, took me away. I was hired full time in La Center, spent about sixteen years there. A ton of gratitude to them. They treated us excellent, got a lot of training, a lot of opportunity there. It was always kind of my dream to come back to Battleground, which when the opportunity arose, this was the first and only place I was gonna test to come back to. It is kind of a dream come true to to be standing here from, you know, two thousand and one, being a reserve police officer to now being promoted to sergeant. Very honored. I thank council, city manager, Chief Port for this opportunity. And in law enforcement, as you all probably know, you can't you can't stay in law enforcement, and you can't certainly can't promote and have achievements without your family. So I appreciate my family being here that these opportunities are as much theirs and it is mine, to be honest. They're the ones that put up with a lot more than than I do, really. And I'm just super excited to move forward and a great team of officers to work with. I love all these guys, and it's gonna be great. Great opportunity moving forward. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you and we wish you a wonderful career.
Thank you very much.
And we'll step out of the way. Again.
I
solemnly
I solemnly affirm
that I will support
that I will support
obey
obey
and defend the Constitution
and the Constitution
and laws of the United States of America
and the laws of the United States of America
and the state of Washington
and the state of Washington
I will abide by
I will abide by
the law enforcement code of ethics
the law enforcement code of ethics
and religiously and partially
and religiously and partially
perform all duties as please serve
perform all duties as please serve
for the city of Battleground
for the city of Battleground
county of Park
county of Park
state of Washington
state of Washington
passage
passage
Harper's Stamp Act
Harper's Stamp Act
congratulations on this joint
Okay, let let's shoot some pictures in there. Pictures to be shot. Where are the where are the cute children? Bring forth the cute children. Run off the children. Let's shoot some. Oh, wait, there there are some people coming. Grandma, do we have your camera? Has someone got your camera? Okay.
I I I don't want you to walk away.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes presentations for this evening.
Well, we we should also say that Ms. Beaver, you're you're first swearing in. And so we we will recognize that as well. Okay, let's let everyone move along as they're moving along. And we'll get started. Thanks for coming. Pleasure to have you. Council, citizens communications, excuse me, open. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comment. Council may not be able to respond to individual individual comments and may refer citizens to a staff member if needed to assist. I have one this evening. If you're interested, the little forms are to my left, your right. Please pick one up, hand hand to Ms. Beaver, and we'll square that away. No worries. We'll start with Ms. Cole. Pleasure to have you, Ms. Cole. The podium is yours.
Thank you. My name's Jessica Cole. My pronouns are she/her. And I am actually a coalition member of the Dream Team or the Prevent Together Coalition. I'm not on the Dream Team. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all the work that Jennifer Kirby does to get all of us adult coalition members to help with what's going on. And I really appreciate all the work that Blake Bowers and Carrie Koller do in the schools. And I'm really amazed by these students, they've been doing the Sparks thing for about two years, they did the emoji program, which may not translate right now, two years ago. And just based on those two things, I'm so impressed with them, and I'm like, they speak my language, you know? So they're doing tremendous work, and I'm so very grateful. And I just wanna say again, I'm so very grateful for the proclamation last, I guess it was last week. And Clark County Council, just this week, they did their second proclamation. And this year, what was different than last year is that it was unanimous, and I was so, so very pleased that it was unanimous this time. And I'm super hopeful that next year, however the procedure goes for proclamations here, I'm hopeful to work with the council in Battleground to have unanimous support from you all. So I'll be back and willing to work with you, so thank you all so much.
Yes ma'am, pleasure to have you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on. The consent agenda, I would ask that items D and E be removed.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. For discussion, yes, and they will be placed right after, right here at the, after we talk about it.
And I, I need to make a change in the minutes if the council agrees. So I believe it's item, is item A the minutes?
Item A is the minute, so A, D, and E will be set aside. So may I have a motion for B, C, F? Let me flip the page and see if there's anything beyond that, so it's B, C, and F.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any, well, all in favor? I. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll start with Mr. McCoy, A.
Just a small change, I, I'm happy to give Councilmember Bowman all kinds of grief for it, but I think he thanked the 18th legislatures, I don't think he tanked them. I mean, I, I would leave it up to my cohorts, I mean, maybe, but it does say council, so that's, so I'm happy switching that to either Councilmember Bowman, tanked them, or the council thanked them.
It's a good possibility, their future might have been.
I'm very flexible, Mayor.
Might have been in, in jeopardy.
So, I'm sorry, I meant to send that email so you could have got it.
So we'll, we'll make that change for sure. On, on D and E, Mark, if you'll just take a few moments and explain what's, what's gonna happen with D and E.
Yeah. So, let me sure I have them in the right order, so D is the Millenfill, so for the two Millenfill projects, we're essentially doing the remaining part of Main Street. So from Parkway to Fairgrounds, and that's where we got the grant from TIB, so they're paying for a majority of it. The other half of the project is doing the remaining portion of Eaton, so essentially from Ninth over by the movie theater to Parkway, where the previous, I think we did it about two years ago, if I remember correctly. So it will finish out those two, and essentially preserve those pavements.
At night.
Not Eaton, the Main Street.
Main Street at night.
Yeah.
So, night starts when?
Once the contract is signed, they can start at, it takes about two weeks to kind of get all the paperwork, they can start at any time. I believe the last day of the contract is the end of August, so they'll give us a schedule, but it'll be sometime in between.
And then, what, what it really meant was the clock, what time does night start?
Oh, sorry, I believe.
And finish.
Probably 8:00 PM to 4:00, something like that, so it's, it's trying to stay out of those peak times, so AM peak is seven to nine, PM peak's four to six, so it's, it's between that. But I think if I remember from a couple of years, or last year was like eight to four, give or take.
And then harvest days is, excuse me?
Yeah, we put in specifically harvest days, they didn't work on those, if they happened to be on that, that time.
On that schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Well, then if I may get a motion then to accept A, D, and E.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am, all in favor?
Aye.
I. Any opposed? Hearing none. Moving on, resolution number 23-03, Northwest First Place Storm Pond Sale, Ms. Erdman.
I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hershey.
Give me one second, I will pull up a map. Okay, so we were approached by the owner of this property on Northwest First, essentially between the Goodwill and Napa. They're in the process of working through a development, and we have a storm pond on the property that's for Northwest First. They would like to purchase that property so they can incorporate the stormwater facility into their property, or into their project, essentially. They're looking at building an underground facility that would reside under their parking lot. The kind of benefits to this is that we would get obviously funds for the property, and it would take a storm facility off of our maintenance list. So from staff's perspective, it, it makes sense to move forward with it, that they did do an appraisal, and the fair market value was 21,000. Because this is being used as a utility, it does have to go through a public hearing, so my recommendation would be, unless you have any questions for me, to go through the public hearing process, and then we can make a decision about whether we wanna surplus it or not.
Well, I guess we'll set that from 17th of July.
Public hearings today.
Oh, you want the public, yeah, oh, that's, did I miss that somewhere?
Public hearing, yes.
Oh, I, I caps letters, I, I apologize. So I will open up the floor, does anyone wish to discuss Northwest First Place Storm Pond Sale? Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, we will close the public hearing on that, and we'll continue on then, Mr. Hershey.
Like I said, I don't think I have anything to add, happy to answer any questions, but if council's willing, I would recommend that you move the surplus of the property, and we'll move forward with the sale.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-03, the Northwest First Place Storm Pond Sale and Surplus the Property.
Second.
Thank you, are there any questions of Mr. Hershey before we move on? Seeing none, there's a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, done. Moving on to Resolution Number 23-06, 2024-2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Ms. Erdman.
Mr. Hershey.
I'll skip the middle, man.
So I presented this two meetings ago, we did make a couple of changes on the Rasmussen Project, we had a cost from the old transportation plan, so we updated it to the new transportation plan. We also forgot that we got the CDBG grant for Northeast First Street, so that project was added to the list, so other than that, we didn't make any changes to what was presented two meetings ago. So again, like the previous one, if we can hold the public hearing, and be happy to answer any questions.
We'll go ahead and open up the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 23-06, the 2024-2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Anyone? Again, seeing no one rushing, we will close the public hearing. I do have a question on the Northeast First Street, the CDBG money, when do you see that happening?
I believe the county said approximately October, if I remember correctly, that they'd start getting the agreements out. It's typically like a fall-winter design, and then early kind of spring, we can get under construction.
So, and that again is sidewalks, right?
Yeah, it's sidewalks from Third over to Central Park on the north side of First Street. And the various improvements that go along with that.
So sometime spring of 2024?
Yes.
Any other questions of Mr. Hershey? Hearing none, is there a question?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-06, the 2024 through 2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
One second.
Thank you, ma'am, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none as well. Moving on, Resolution 20, Number 23-07, the Clark Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, we'll just go with Mr. Hershey.
Yeah, so I presented this at the last meeting, kind of in summary, this plan addresses natural hazards and how to mitigate for them, things such as earthquakes, volcanoes, forest fires, those sorts of things. This was a fairly simple update from the previous one, which I believe was done in 2017, was when it was adopted. This just kind of updated the projects we were looking at, and met a few other federal standards that had changed since then. This does not require a public hearing, but does require the resolution, so I just asked if you have any questions, if not, I'd recommend approval of it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hershey? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution Number 23-07, the Clark Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none as well, moving on. At the end of the last meeting, we had a small discussion about the governance coordination manual. And so we'll turn that over right quickly to Ms. Erdman.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, yes, we brought this back for discussion, I have ran this by Mr. Ellis, and in looking at the code language, we are recommending an update. Mostly because this does kind of pose some First Amendment issues, the way this is written currently, it is the mayor charged with approval of proclamations at his or her discretion. So the recommendation at this point would be threefold, either we take proclamations away altogether, so that we're not making those selection criteria based on group and opinion. Or we take every proclamation that is requested and add that to the agenda moving forward. The third option would be to maybe implement a process for council to have a say in that, one of the things that was suggested was maybe add an agenda item each month to review any proclamations that were received, and then vote on which ones would move forward, so that is kind of the recommendations at this time, Mr. Ellis, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
After you just saying that.
As, as it's written right now, there's quite a bit of discretion, that's a law person, when you're discussing, you have, that needs to be removed altogether, or it needs to be brought on, sort of explored out of council.
Could you, could you expand on that, what, what, what is wrong with that?
Well, depending on, and this is no reference to the term there, but it then stated, anytime it does that much discretion in one individual, what is or is not appropriate, you're potentially.
Thank you, you're potentially creating issues, First Amendment issues, if, if one individual decides, it's still not, still not.
Trouble hearing the.
Okay, if, if one individual is making a decision, what is or is not appropriate, that could potentially create potential liability for the city. So I, I'm not following your, your track process, because the mayor's not unilaterally making it, he's making a decision to put it on the agenda. But if council decides that it's something they don't wanna move forward with, all it requires is four members of council to oppose it, and it dies, so. The, the issue is whether it goes on the agenda at all, the mayor could receive a proclamation and make a unilateral decision that it doesn't go on the agenda. But the mayor controls the agenda. Well, this is, in, in my opinion, it's a little bit different, because this is something that these proclamations come in. If one person disagrees with the content of the proclamation, that person has the discretion to, to deny the proclamation being presented to the council as a body. So are you suggesting then that the mayor does not control the agenda? No, 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 I'm not suggesting that at all. Then what are you suggesting? I'm suggesting that one person having the discretion over whether or not a proclamation is presented to the entire body could potentially raise First Amendment issues. But under that, under that, the way you proposed it right there, under that, that means every single item on this agenda right here, he should not have the authority to put items on there, because a council member or individuals of council may have a problem with it, that's what you're suggesting.
Well, and, and we can add, or councilmembers can add to the agenda as well, so I'm, I'm confused as well, I guess.
I think it comes down to the discretion to add or not, being with one person.
But that's not consistent with what other jurisdictions do, though, that's what, that's what concerns me, of that legal theory. What? I, I think that, I guess what I'm hung up on is that these are proclamations that are received from the public. The, the other items you're talking about are business items for the council. Some are received from the public.
Sometimes they're school groups.
And some of these are holidays, federal holidays that we're declaring.
Or acknowledging.
Yeah, so if I am upset about firefighters, I get it removed, I guess, seems kind of silly.
I mean, I appreciate you coming here and tell, tell us, that legal theory just doesn't stand up, I, I just don't, I'm not following it.
May, may I take a moment and state just what my prerequisites have been, this go around and last, and they're very simple. Mine is that if you're, if you have a proclamation to be read, that you show up, someone shows up to receive it. If no one shows up to receive it, it then goes into the public record, it's not read out loud, because if you're not willing to come, accept it, then I'm not willing to read it. I'm, I've also never turned anything back from the city council and/or from the public writ large.
And I think that's been customary for most mayors, if, if not all mayors.
Or at least the last 12 years.
Yeah, when I was mayor, that's what happened, anybody that wanted to propose a proclamation, boom, gets put on the agenda.
Does that need to be codified, is that what you're saying?
And I, I think that's one, one of the recommendations that we had, is if there is a request made that it gets put on the agenda, and maybe that's what we fix in the governance manual, that way, we don't have one person, whoever, you know, the mayor at the time is making the decision whether that gets added to the agenda or not.
I, I don't, I, I don't mind any proclamation getting put on the agenda, again, it's still up to the mayor on what agenda gets put on, right? Because there could be scheduling issues, all that other kind of stuff. So I don't mind that, but saying we're gonna remove power from the mayor in his or her official capacity, and so it's up to us to always basically vote on what goes on the agenda. Oh my, we are gonna have, it's gonna open up a can of worms. And that was, that was one of the options, as Ms. Erdman indicated, there were three recommendations that we discussed, that was one of the options to discuss, and it sounds like that's not a viable option for this council.
What about if it said specifically that it's the mayor's proclamation, so that you're not infringing on anybody's First Amendment rights, if it's there, they are presenting proclamation not on our behalf?
Mr. Bowman has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
The little tiny.
It's a little tiny, we're, we're, yes, yes, yes.
I guess the question I would ask is whose First Amendment right is it infringing upon? Because it's not a First Amendment, in my opinion, a proclamation is not a First Amendment right, there, we're, we're the ones that is, that are doing the proclamation to recognize somebody, it's not a group who were infringing upon their First Amendment rights, am I correct?
It, it is our business meeting, and we, we do, if, we do have the right to ask someone to leave if they're disruptive, so as our business meeting, do we have to accept everyone that, that wants to do something like that, and is what I get, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Shane, continue on, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's just like, like, I'm wondering, it, it, is the issue of the First Amendment rights of a council member, or is the issue the First Amendment rights of a individual that would like a proclamation? Because the First Amendment rights are freedom of speech, not, in my opinion, but I, I, you know, and that's what I'd like clarification from. Is, is the First Amendment right for you to say, I want this proclamation, and I want the mayor to read it, how does that become a First Amendment right?
Well, it, it arguably, yeah, I, I can't say for certain, it would be an infringement, I, I am saying that it potentially raises issues.
With, with who?
With, with the individual.
Which individual?
The individual. The individual wishing for the proclamation to be read.
So if we refuse a proclamation to be read, that's the First Amendment.
So wait, is it?
Potentially. I, I'm not saying a hundred percent. I'm saying.
I forget to use my lawyer words.
So the person that submits it.
Correct.
We're worried about their infringement, even though we haven't turned any away.
Well, it's potential.
That's right. Right now, the way it's written, there's a potential.
There's a potential.
Yeah. Okay, I guess it was confusing because it made it sound like.
It was a council members first of all.
Yeah.
No, I, I apologize if that's what it sounded like. That's, that's not what I intended.
So we're not allowed to set criteria for proclamations like, you know, federal law, um, community recognition?
The other thing we talked about too is, you know, if the council wanted to go through and just designate which proclamations would be read each year, that's another option as well. But it kind of sounds like the best would be having the mayor put any requested proclamation on the agenda. And then now that we have the add or removal, that's when it could be handled at that time if there was a, um, a conflict regarding that.
That we could do it. Then the consent agenda.
Right. I, the only thing that we would need to update is just the governance manual stating that any proclamation received would be added to the agenda.
As long as there's an asterisk there, as long as the proclamation doesn't promote hate, doesn't promote violence. See where I'm going with all that?
discrimination.
But then that's kind of where the issue comes into, because then if it's written the way it is, who's making that determination on whose opinion is it? Hate or violence or?
Well, then can you even vote it down then at that point?
Well, there's laws that say what.
Well, when it's on the agenda, then, uh, when it's, when it's stated on the agenda and the agenda comes out, uh, at least five days in advance of the meeting, then there's the seven of us. I see him again. I see him again. There's the seven of us and then there's, there's people who get the agenda, who could, who could come and, and complain. But again, we, we field all complaints, as you know. And so I, I, I've always had it on the agenda. Every mayor before me has always had it on the agenda. And the, the six others have, have had the opportunity to say, you know, no can do or, or okay, we're good with it. And, and I take no complaint being, I'm okay with it. So if you don't contact me and say, hey, eh, then I, I take that as a yes. I assume I, we can, we can do that. So I, I would, uh, Shane, yes, your hand.
So I and maybe, maybe I'm missing this. I, I'm totally confused how it's somebody's First Amendment right to have a proclamation read. You, your First Amendment right is to come in and speak your mind, not tell us what we have to write down or what we have to say about what you want. That's not, that's not a, I, I, I mean, maybe I'm crazy, but that does not seem like a First Amendment right to me. Your First Amendment right is to come to our meeting and comment under citizens' communication and say what you would like to say, but not tell us you have to do a proclamation for us and you have to, you're telling, you're telling me what I have to say. And, and so I don't understand where that is the First Amendment right.
Mr. Ellis, let me, let me then add, uh, address his, his question would be as an example, if you, if you run up flags in, in the city runs up the Old Glory, the state POW flag. If we ran up someone else's flag, I believe according to Supreme Court, we have to take everyone's flag. If I understood that properly, when I saw that. So if we take the American Red Cross on as a proclamation, then we have to take anyone's proclamation. Am I, am I reading what, what you're saying correctly?
Yes.
But how, how does that comport? So, but then we vote on it. And then it seems like that vote, then if we vote no on it, then the First Amendment right's still infringed. So are we being forced to vote yes on every proclamation? What's, what's the distinction there?
Arguably, there is then. That's, that's part of the issue. That's, that's why the council needs to look at this, uh, and, and address the language that's in the manual.
But you're, you're telling us we have to put it on the agenda. If, if it's asked. You're also saying that we have to vote it through if it's on the agenda. What, what can we write in?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if there is, if there's, if there's a clear indication that it, by, that it's not protected First Amendment speech, then you don't have to approve it.
So oth- other than violence and like Councilmember Cortez was saying, so we have to approve anything that's not above that or that's not of that nature?
Arguably, yes.
All right, I want a second opinion that.
I, I, I would, I would, you know, you do bring up some good points, Mr. McCoy, uh, you know, and, and nothing against you, but you're, you're providing us a legal opinion that may or may not be arguable and there may not be any case law on it. So you know, I, I, again, I'm not trying to discredit you or anything like that. It's, it's simply a, a legal opinion, right? I, I have no, I have no problem with that. And, and frankly, I believe it's something that you should run by the city's insurer since they would be the one potentially footing the bill if the city's challenged on something like that. And, and I feel that our insurer would have said something over the course of twelve to twenty years if there was an issue with it, and there hasn't been. You know, this, this really stemmed from, um, you know, Councilmember Davis brought this up, uh, basically when we, uh, had the, uh, Pride, uh, proclamation being read. And we had that read on, was it Monday? That was ever uh, this past Monday, the twelfth?
No.
Is that right?
So it is the first.
The, the first Monday.
The first one, the fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all blended.
And, and so, you know, at, at any point, if anybody had an issue with that, um, they could have made a motion that that not be on the agenda or that not be passed, or the mayor didn't do that. Uh, nobody did. Um, actually, uh, Ms. Davis sent an email to both the city manager and to the mayor uh, saying that she, uh, you know, wanted to see what's the process if she had an issue with that. And she was given clear instructions on what that process was. She chose not to do anything that evening. But then she brought this issue. And to me, this is a non-issue. Right? It's been working fine for council for the past twelve, arguably more years. Um, we are honoring, uh, whether it be federal holidays, we're honoring armed services, we're honoring law enforcement, we're honoring, uh, historically marginalized groups, whether it be uh, Black History Month or Hispanic Awareness Month or Autism Awareness Month and Pride Awareness Month, right? These are, there's, there's nothing controversial about that. By honoring these people and saying battleground, uh, appreciates the value that you bring our community. Um, so I, I, I really, I, I, I mean, Ms. Davis, I'd like to, you to tell us what, what issue did you have with that Pride Proclamation?
I believe what I asked at Council Communications was clarification on the proclamation process.
I asked you specifically, are you against it? And it's on the record.
I will not answer you. I, I, I'm answering that my question was you took it to the other extent. I had every right to ask for uh, clarification and it was for council to go forward and just discuss it and go from there. It, it wasn't supposed to be a huge issue. It was, hey, the mayor gets to say something and it would be nice to have a discussion. You brought it to the other thing. I was asked by a public individual about the process. I therefore asked. And so I.
I can bring up, I can bring up the minutes. You said I don't support it. Well, I, I, point blank, I, I asked you. So what, what about it? Did you not support?
Not engage with you. I'm sorry. This is not where we're going back and forth on this with you. So my question was for the city manager. I appreciate what the city manager brought forward. It was a discussion. And we can decide as a council that there's nothing wrong with discussing on how, just because it's been done for eons, why can't it come up and just be discussed? And so that is, that was my question at the end of the meeting and how it went from there was beyond my control. And so I'm, I'm thankful for the clarification, which is what I asked for. I could say thank you.
Shane, uh, you again, sir.
Thank you. So if we go back to the last meeting and how, how this came about, what you're telling us tonight would, is, is there, there would have been no discussion about it, is, is what you're saying tonight, that, that there it doesn't matter if there's two thirds vote or not. There is no discussion about it if a proclamation is put on the agenda. Because we would be violating First Amendment rights. Is that correct?
I don't think he's asking me, sir.
It wasn't clear if that question was directed to me or to.
Yeah, to, to, to you, because, well, I, I mean, you know, e- either way, it, it, you know, to you, what you're telling us tonight is it wouldn't have mattered if someone has an offense to a proclamation that is on the agenda that has been asked to be read to, you know, what, what Ms. Davis did. If, if you had an issue with that, what you're saying, wha- what she asked for would not have mattered in what you're telling us. Is that correct?
I, I apologize. I'm not following the question.
So, so if she wanted to, if, if, when, in the last meeting, she, she, she said she had exception to the, the proclamation that was read. And so in our governance manual, it says you can take it to a vote, two thirds would, would kill that proclamation and would not allow it to be read. What you're saying is there would never be a vote. It would never go to a vote. You wouldn't be able to, um, to her credit, if, if she had an issue with it, she would not be able to stop that proclamation from being read. Because it would violate the First Amendment rights.
Arguably, potentially, yes.
So there's a First Amendment right to have somebody else read your words?
It, the content, yes. If, if you, uh, if you present something to someone and you say, this is, this is how I feel about something and it's read in, in a public forum or you refuse to read it in a public forum, then potentially there are issues with that.
E- e- even if we offer that person three minutes to read it themselves.
Yeah.
So that, that, that person can complain that, that I, I, currently I won't read it for whatever reason. Uh, but I'm certainly offering and we're certainly offering them three minutes to read away. Of which we've never turned anyone back, of course, on that. Hang on just a minute.
It's unrelated, I just.
And so does that negate any of that? Even though you can read your own words, we're, you're more than welcome to read your own words. I, but are, are, am I forced to read your words? The way you're reading this currently?
The way the manual is written, it, and it's not just me, it's, there's another attorney in our office that has looked at this. It, it's our opinion that it potentially raises issues if the city receives a proclamation and that proclamation is not read. That's why one of the options was to completely do away with proclamations. Another option was to have the council as a body and look at the proclamations. And the third option was to leave things as they are.
Yes. So I just wanted to say, um, if we could speak into the microphones, because our sound is not projecting in the audience. So there's no way to turn it up. I tried. So yeah, so we just have to be really close so everybody can hear us. Thank you. No, you're fine. I'm talking to all of us, because I didn't know you can't turn up the volume.
Mr. Bowman, please.
You, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to leave it personally the way it is. Um, no offense to, to our legal counsel, but we had legal counsel that helped us with this governance manual and got us to this point and, and, you know, um, it, it just, to me, it, it's never been a problem. We, we've always put proclamations forward. Um, you know, i- if if you had an, if you have an issue with it, you at least get to voice your opinion where what, what, what we're being told is, is we wouldn't have an opinion at all. You couldn't voice your opinion. And so we would have to take everything. I just think that we give them every opportunity to speak. We give them opportunities to come before us. Um, you know, we, we've done proclamations where we've gave, um, the key to the city to somebody because of what they've done in the community. And if that's the case, we'd be making, you know, twenty-three thousand keys because we have to give one to anybody. And so I just think that, you know, we continue to do what we do. Um, you know, we can review them. We, we know every proclamation is coming forward because it gets put on the agenda if we have an issue with it to, you know, speak up and talk and, and make our voices heard. It's not to, it's not to stop us from, from having our voices heard. But, um, just to continue to, to do it the way we, we have been doing it.
Nice question. Please. The other option to have council approve putting a proclamation on there was one of the options, correct?
Correct.
Would you have to have a quorum then to do that? I mean, how many then makes this okay? I, I mean.
Well, you would write that however you, so.
Well, that we'd have to call a meeting
Right.
to decide what proclamations to put on the agenda. I mean, you, this is just insanity.
Well, and, and just to clarify too, the only discussion that we were having between Mr. Ellis, Mr. Plant and I wasn't necessarily the content of a proclamation. It's just the process. And where we found that we could potentially have issues is just leaving it up to one person of the body to make the decision just based on the way this is written, saying, you know, you can decline potentially controversial, political or religious in nature. Well, that could mean one thing to one person and something else to another. And so that's the only discussion that we were having.
Well, and that's what I was getting to. So how many people do we have to add to that? Do we add the deputy mayor and call it good? Is that enough? Do we have to, do we have to make it three?
And we also talk, you know, there's the First Amendment right of the citizen and you guys have your First Amendment right as a council as well. So it's it's a tough one. We would just wanted to make sure, the way we read this, it, it could be determined different ways by different people and the process isn't really clear when it says that it should go to a vote in two thirds. So I think our point coming forward was just to clarify if we did have a controversial issue, what is the actual process that we would like to see moving forward?
Well, the process is all council has a voice in it, right? A council member can bring it up and say, hey, I feel, you know, when Ms. Davis said she didn't agree with a proclamation that we read for Pride Month, she had a choice. She had a choice to sway for other council members. Um, she, she didn't, and so that's where it went.
And I would clarify too, that Ms. Davis didn't, she asked to bring back the language of the governance manual to take a look at. That's what she requested.
To, to get back to my original question though, so the issue is only the mayor currently has the veto hammer on the proclamations. One of suggestions is to add people to that decision. How many people do we need to add?
I, I believe the discussion we had was having it be an agenda item for the council's discussion.
Directly to the agenda then.
Correct.
And then we, at that point, we still can vote it down and we're okay. Because I think you said earlier, we couldn't vote it down then, because we're still infringing on that person's right if we don't read it, according to, to, to the theory I'm hearing.
I, I'm saying that's an option. I'm not saying it's a foolproof option, or that it will prevent the council from be, being subject to a potential claim of a First Amendment violation.
Well, the good news is, is that it passed six oh, so we don't.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any desire to change it. I stand with Mr. Bowman. Uh, we've been doing it fine for this long. Our insurer hasn't brought it up. Um, the mayor, none of the past mayors have ever declined a, a proclamation going on our agenda. And if there is any problems with any proclamations moving forward, any council member can bring up their reservations and we have a discussion about it.
Yeah, I would like to get more information about it. Possibly just if there is any case law on it and, um, maybe talk to our insurer just to make sure. Um, but, but yeah.
But giving, giving them the veto right means that the, uh, the little civics group that we had a month ago, if, if, if the insurer says, yeah, you're, you're best not to do them, then we're done. The ban, done. The people this evening, done. I don't know that we're in the business of not recognizing, uh, children at their best or even adults at their best. We, it wasn't too long ago, we had a group of, of basketball playing men who took the time to save the life of one of their own when he fell, uh, fell with a heart attack. So I, uh, I don't mind. Uh, I, I just excuse me. I, I'm, I'm, I'm with Shane and, and Mr. Cortez. Twelve years I've been here, we've rolled on well. I mean, if we get someone that comes in, then, then we get someone that comes in and we, we, we play the game.
If we were to put something in the governance manual that if a proclamation is turned down by the mayor, then it goes to the council to vote up or down.
That's not a bad idea. And you haven't denied any, right?
But we're we're dealing in theoretical.
Yeah, again, the only requirement for me and those before me has been
I understand.
If you don't show up, then I'm not gonna read it.
You're too cute for jail. Let's try to keep you out of jail.
Mr. McCoy, I don't even think that's even necessary because
I I don't disagree.
Remember, if I ask for something to go on the agenda, and if they get four of their colleagues to support that, then it goes on the.
I I'm at a loss to to argue that point because I, yeah, I I'm just trying to make it work. I I don't know.
And again, I mean, this is just a potential issue. This is your guys' manual. We were asked to take a look at it. That's what we did.
Yeah. Go find with it, Esther.
And and to quote a a lawyer from the past on the Supreme Court, I I I know the definite, I don't know the definition of pornography, but I know it when I see it. Is that a pretty good? What what the gentleman had said?
Yes.
So uh, we're we're in that uh in that field. I I would uh I would move that we just leave it the way it is and and roll roll on. Uh, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion for that?
So we're just leaving it, not looking into it.
We're leaving it the way it is, uh, the way it's been since the formation of the city as far as I can see. For for sixty some odd years, so.
Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't I don't think we even need a motion for that. It would just stay as is.
Then we're not going to change the change it at all. Thank you very much. Any other before I close it out? Hearing nothing, we'll move on. Moving on to the filling of the vacancy for council position number three. Let me first for the record, uh, the time. Pardon? Yes, ma'am, and we offered that at the very beginning of the meeting. No, ma'am. Thank you for coming. Moving on, a a letter was sent, an email was sent actually to the three applicants. I will read that letter just to put it into the record. This letter is to inform you that you've been selected to move forward to the interview process for city council position number three. The interviews will take place at the Battleground City Council Meeting on Thursday, June fifteen, twenty twenty-three, starting at seven PM, located at one oh nine Southwest First Street, Battleground, Washington. The interviews are scheduled at the end of the council agenda. Once we begin the interview portion of the meeting, we will ask all candidates to move to a separate conference room and we'll bring the candidate candidates in for interviews one at a time. Applicants will be called in alphabetical order. Interview interviews will have a maximum time limit of thirty minutes per applicant, and each council member has the option to ask each applicant up to three questions, lower the three questions that will be asked of every applicant. What is your vision for short term and long term growth for Battleground? What are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for Battleground? Can you tell us what you have uh what you have been involved within the city? Once all the applicants have been interviewed for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten parentheses one parentheses H, council shall meet and adjourn to the executive session to discuss the applicants at the conclusion of the executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten parentheses one parentheses hotel. Council shall come back to the open session to take a vote, fill the vacancy. Upon selection of a new council member, that person shall be sworn in by the city clerk and take their seat at the dais. Again, applicants will be asked to leave the room and not interview. Each interview will be a maximum thirty minutes and uh including follow-up. Applicants will be interviewed by Alphabet Butler Demon Ferrera. The order in which council members will ask questions has been randomly selected and is as follows. I will ask the three questions that I just read on the uh the original letter. And then it will be Miss uh Mr. Cortez, Ms. Davis, Mr. Bowman, Mr. McCoy, and Mr. Rogers. Ms. Beaver, who we met earlier, will escort Mr. Demon, Ms. Fair to suite two eighty, and Mr. Butler's interview will begin. I don't, Ms. Fair, I do not see her. The time is eight oh eight. I will assume that she has lost interest. Uh, Mr. Demon, if you will go with Ms. Beavers, we'll square this away. Thank you, sir, for coming. Mr. Butler, thank you for coming, sir.
Hello.
Uh, hold on just a moment.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Uh, yes, sir.
Did did we have any, did the city have any uh confirmation from Ms. Fair?
No, we did not have confirm, we didn't request confirmation from any of the applicants. We sent them the the process.
From the email that that
From the email address to each.
That every that they have given us.
Yes.
And we mentioned at the
Thank you.
Meeting, right?
And we mentioned it at the end of the meeting on Monday the twelfth.
And she was here.
Yeah, she was here.
Yes.
So at this point,
Thank you.
Her not being here, we will take as her uh having lost interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Butler, the time, sir, is uh, let's see, is ten minutes after eight. And I will start five minutes for my three questions, please, sir. So I ask you to be succinct and to the point. What is your vision for sharp, short term and long term growth for Battleground?
Okay, so for the for the short term growth, it's uh continuing to improve the business friendliness within within the city of Battleground. We need to continue to make it easier for employers to come in. And if that's if that's modifications to the to the operations of the city and and supporting the departments and helping the city manager, she's working with those department leads, then and that's what we do. Um, and then for the long term growth Battleground is continuing to focus on infrastructure. Um, it's pushing on on improving sidewalks, roads um and and other infrastructure that's going to support the um the uh commercial growth within the city.
Thank you, sir. Second question is, what are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for the city of Battle?
Fixing twentieth. No, that's it. I got nothing else. Um, now, uh, that and then continue to to focus on partnerships with the community organizations to help uh alleviate some of the the pressures on the city and also to help build engagement within our community through that effort.
Thank you, sir. And the third question is, can you tell us what you've been involved in within the city?
Yes. Um, so a number of different things. Uh, I've been on the Parks Advisory Board and worked on that as we as we developed the uh the Veterans Memorial and helped finish that out. Um, I've been on the Planning Commission, um, where we entered the comprehensive plan and made recommendations and and was very excited to hear that the uh the the North First Avenue or First Street finally is going to get some sidewalks after five plus years of pushing for the darn thing. And so that's just within that that portion of the city and then also within the community. Um, I'm a member of Lewis for Rotary. Um, we have been very, very involved within the schools. We've partnered with the city uh to work on Central Park. Um, and really, really drive that, worked with the schools. Um, we just gave out twenty-two thousand dollars in scholarships to Battleground students um to help them, it helped them succeed in the future. And then also uh following a meeting um uh about emergency preparedness and the city's response uh have been leading an initiative within within my congregation to to fix emergency preparedness. Um, really, that's building communications. It's is uh emergency preparedness for food, water, uh disaster response and and trying to ensure that at least some of our citizens are ready in case in case something happens and we can respond in a in a beneficial way.
Thank you, sir. That uh was three minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cortez, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
The time is thirteen minutes after eight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Butler, for coming here tonight and expressing interest on serving. Uh, the city does a lot of mundane things, a lot of policy, a lot of, you know, looking at ordinances and and the planning. Can you uh give us, I'm not asking for uh, you know, a detailed dissertation presentation, but give us a summary of your knowledge of the Growth Management Act, GMA, and also RTIP, which is our transportation improvement plan.
Yes, uh, it's hard. It it makes it difficult to make choices sometimes. Um, so the Growth Management Act, it governs development within our community, um, especially dictating that that relationship between the the commercial and the residential mix within our community so that we're not uh, I mean, a twofold issue of pricing people out of our community by turning into a veteran community of Portland, Vancouver. And also ensuring that our citizens have have a level of livability. Um, and that the the transportation plan is essential in that and ensuring that that we have corridors that can support the functioning of that. We need to ensure that that, you know, we have our project on five oh two, five oh three, that that the improvements are necessary and that we have the aspects necessary to drive uh the Growth Management Act and creating a more equal balance between uh those two competing interests of residential and commercial.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Uh, that was a very deep question. I'm going to give you a softball question. Uh, it's important that everybody that serves on council knows some very basic details about our community. When was our community incorporated and how many people live in it today?
Uh, nineteen fifty-one and twenty I don't know, whatever the census says, twenty-three ish, twenty-five.
Thank you. And then my last question.
Before you do that, you want to reserve some time to hear everyone else's or your?
I'm good.
Keep rolling.
I'm rolling. Well, the same.
I'll get out of your way.
Yeah. Uh, my last question. So you heard tonight, you were in the audience. We were talking about the uh way proclamations are performed. Whether it's, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, Black History Month, Autism Awareness Month, so on and so forth. Uh, if you were up here uh at our last council meeting and you had to vote to support Pride Awareness Month, how would you have voted and explain your vote?
I would have voted yes. Because because the vote is one seventh of the community. It's not just, it's not just fully my own personal opinions, what I want to do. But but as a representative of the people, um, it's it's something that the community stands for and realistically, I don't on a on a personal, I don't see anything wrong with it, like being able to recognize individuals within the community, especially those who have struggled is is important because as we bring focus to that, then we allow those people to come out of the shadows and allow them to to be who they really are. And whether I agree with it or don't agree with it doesn't matter because I live the life that other people may oppose as well. And and I can't be a hypocrite on that aspect.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you. Three minutes, thirty seconds. If we're just rolling, I I I certainly want to do this by the book. Ms. Davis, you're next.
Slower.
Yeah, Ms. Davis, you're next. It's sixteen minutes after eight and forty-five seconds. Please go.
Um, I just want to thank you for applying and for stepping up. I appreciate it. But um I have no questions at this time to ask. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Uh, moving on, Mr. Bowman, the time, sir, is seventeen minutes after eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Butler, for for your participation in this process and and for uh filling out the application, more importantly, for showing up tonight to go through this interview process. Um, as someone who will be a part of the budget process, if you're appointed, what do you feel would be priorities for you and how would you accomplish those priorities through the budget?
So so the most important aspect of the overarching aspect of this is fiscal responsibility. Um, the city is is in a great place right now, and it's not just through through great fortune. It's been through good governance and and being consistent in following through. It's eliminating debts and and fortunately, the city of Battleground is one of one of two in the southwest Washington that is not burdened with with overwhelming crushing debt. Um, and it it allows us to weather difficulties and allows us to be able to invest a community that that doesn't exist in most places in our county. My my priorities with that lie what lie uh specifically with infrastructure. Because we live in a rural, rural uh community, um we we need to be wise in how we spend our our tax dollars on our infrastructure because it has to last and it needs to be maintained. Uh, and so that would be my number one priority and then police, sewer, garbage, um, and emergency services.
Thank you. Um, second question, as a counselor, I may give you a scenario. As a counselor, uh, your neighbors will often bring complaints to your attention. If your neighbor is complaining about cars speeding through the neighborhood, how would you handle it to resolve their complaint?
Uh, I mean, the first thing I do is I would give them the phone number to the I call it the complaint line, but it's the the one when you call the city and you push four and then it takes it to the the code enforcement officer. Um, and and honestly, that that really would be so. So we did have this issue in my neighborhood with speeding and with uh multiple trailer homes, not trailer homes, where are they? Mobile homes um that were migrating in the neighborhood. And and really, it was it was notifying the the code enforcement officer and and going through the normal channels uh and established channels so that we could address it. Um, and other than before, what our neighbors used to do was just complain about it and nothing would happen. Uh, when we worked with the city, um, we found resolution and got it taken care of uh for both the speeding and and the parking issue.
Thank you. Uh, last question. What do you believe, this this is kind of a trick question, so for, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold you to it if you don't get this right, but what do you believe our business, our biggest expense in the future will be?
What's the biggest expense going to be? It's personnel. I mean, it's it's infrastructure and then it's the people because ultimately we work on these major projects and the major project, the infrastructure are our major projects, but but then we have, we need to have people to be able to execute on these and and spending money on payroll and taxes and those types of things are um are up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCoy, you're next. Time, sir, is is eight twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Butler, for uh taking the time to show up and appreciate your effort. Simple questions. Uh, how much time a week do you think uh on average this will take?
Four every other week. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Um, no, based on, I mean, just council meetings plus researching plus plus committee meetings. I mean, it's you got a minimum ten, that sometimes forty to sixty hours.
And uh, follow-up question, do you have that time?
I do.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Rogers, the time is twenty, uh, eight twenty-two.
All right, I just have one question, but first I would, I want to thank you for applying for the position and uh, you know, being here for us to pastor you. Um, so this is a nonpartisan position and we're expected to serve all of our citizens. How do you plan to serve citizens who do not politically align with you, who may not look like you, live like you, think like you, or believe like you?
Well, that's all my neighbors, right?
That's what?
That's all my neighbors, right? I mean, the the purpose of city council is to focus on on the specifics, right? We we, it's easy to get sucked into the weeds, but but zoning is not a partisan, it should not be a partisan issue. Uh, infrastructure should not be a partisan issue. So doing what's right for the community in general is is the focus that I have. So so we can't vote on gun control. We can't fix abortion. We can't we can't do all of the other things because it's not per in purview of the city council. Uh, the responsible is, the responsibility of the council is to administer the budget, ensure that we have water, sewer, police, roads and and parks and those types of things. And that when those things are addressed, then we get to do the other proclamations and other stuff that that make people get fiery. But that that my responsibility is that I don't just represent my own interest. I represent a seventh of the community. And that that seventh has a voice, even if it's not always my voice. Um, so when it comes to the core job of the council, it's experience that I have doing those things. It's budgetary experience with multi-million dollar budgets. It's uh, it's HR experience and understanding how to work with the city manager. It's um, is zoning and code understanding and and being involved in the cities, the city's different committees so that I can understand the operations of the city. But then when it comes to to the other things that are not that, then it's about my my representing the interest of of the people of the city. So back to Mr. Cortez's uh question about whether or not I would support the the proclamation celebrating Pride Month. It doesn't matter what my opinion is, uh, only in essence that that I represent the will of the people and also um that that I need to maintain. That I represent the will of the people and also um, that, that I need to maintain my integrity. If it's, if I want something for me or I expect other groups to be able to have that, then I need to be interested in understanding. Uh, groups that I may not belong to. Um, and that requires speaking to those people to, to understand. What their, what their lived experience is, so that I can represent that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We will go one more time through with those that are, are eligible. Ms. Davis, have you, have you any questions?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Mr. Boy, you have one and you're good as well. Mr. Rogers, you're good as well.
What is the airspeed now?
Mr. Butler, I, I will take the uh, take the time to ask if you, if you'd like to sum up. In a, in a minute or so, uh, just a summation.
Yes. Um, I recognize that, that filling this vacancy is not a long-term thing. Right? It's just a, it's a six-month block until we get a new, a new counselor elected. Um, and that I understand the, the process the council works through. I understand the, the procedures. And I understand the needs and interest of the city and the dynamic of the council itself. And. That when it comes to filling a seat for such a short time, it's important to pick somebody who, who can step in and just. Go with the flow, right? Not just not, I go with the flow, but, but to be able to, to move forward here. There's not a lot of learning curve, uh, time to be like, let me just figure it out. Um, it's about being able to step in and act quickly so that we can continue to, to serve the people's business. And that I'm that person and I'm ready to step in if you're, if you're willing.
Thank you, sir. It was a pleasure to have you. Ms. Beaver, where there's reading material in the back for you. Uh, and so uh, we, we do appreciate you coming and uh, thanks again for all you do for the city.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We will take the time to do that. We will take five minutes for, for, for a break. And then uh, when Mr. Damon comes, we'll just have him stand. It's the twenty twenty-sixth. Uh, Mr. Damon, we're in the, in the midst of a five-minute break. So please, if, if you'll just station there, we're, we've got four more minutes. And so uh, we're, we're waiting on the, on that good laps. No, it's, it's still rolling. Thank you. Uh, the time is twenty thirty. Welcome, Mr. Damon. It's a pleasure to have you, sir. Uh, we'll start with the three questions as we, as I had mentioned earlier. Uh, number one is what is your vision for short-term and long-term growth for Battleground? I thought a lot about that question. Uh, one of the things in short-term that I really see, maybe it's not considered growth. But it is doing what we're doing now, such as at the, at the big intersection at five oh two and main. Cleaning up our roads. There's things that need to be done with the Grace and Main intersection. I know there's money for that. Short-term, those are the things I'd like to see. I'd also like to see Onsdorf completed all the way through to um, to Grace. That would be a good thing. Um, long-term, what I've noticed and in fact, I'm working in the planning commission. There's been some things in our code that has allowed some of the uh, contractors. To do less than I think would be best by our young people. I believe you brought it up in some of the meetings, Mr. Mayor, about the issue of the seven-year-old kid not caring about an old, a little trail. But wanting nice parks. We need to hold our developers to a high standard. Not a low standard, a high standard, so that we get good developments that are consistent with the other construction around them. And that uh, it gives good quality of life. We're never going to have necessarily the small-town feel that Battleground had in nineteen eighty. But we want to maintain a very good feel in the new development that goes into this city. Thank you, sir. Question number two is what? What are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for the city? One of the priorities that I've heard mentioned that I really want to focus on. Is building some sort of a sports complex here. I had the honor of singing the National Anthem for the Raptors a couple of weeks ago. And I was very impressed with what Ridgefield has done with that. I would love to see Battleground do something like that. And just in general, kee- keep building on what we have. We've had, we have some really good things. Harvest Days, what a wonderful festival. Um, I would like to see something, a better location for it than, than using necessarily the old fairgrounds. Have a more dedicated new fairgrounds for something like that. Thank you, sir. And number three is, can you tell us what you have been involved with in, inside the city? Inside the city, I uh, um, recent, most recent was I had the honor of playing the. Uh, Battle Hymn of the Republic at our Memorial Day service at the memorial uh, at Kiwanis Park. Uh, I have been on the planning commission since January first. In deciding whether or not to run for this position. I started attending every meeting. You guys have seen my face here virtually every meeting since January first. I wanted to know what goes on at these meetings, what people do here and what is going on in our city. And I wanted to immerse myself in that, get as much information as I could to make an educated decision. Number one, did I want to run? And number two, did I want to apply for this? And the answer was yes. Thank you, sir. That was uh, that was just right at three and a half minutes. Thank you. Mr. Cortez, sir, the time is twenty thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dingman, thank you very much for coming and stepping forward to apply for the vacancy as well as run for office. Um, so I'm going to be consistent, ask you the same questions I asked uh, the other gentleman. Uh, we do a lot of things in, in our duties as elected officials in the city, um, and sometimes there are big media issues. Uh, tell us, give me a summary of your understanding of what the Growth Management Act is, also known as the GMA. Uh, as well, and then how does it work with our uh, transportation improvement plan?
The Growth Management Act, basically, I believe it was passed in nineteen ninety by the state. And it allows the state legislature to dictate how much growth we have to plan for. That is my understanding at this point. Uh, and as a, as a result of that. It puts boundaries around what we can do. We have some wiggle room as to how we can plan developments and plan and zone. But we can't say, no, we're not putting in these developments. We, we could set ourselves up for a lawsuit from developers if we refuse to do that kind of growth. And then as far as the transportation and the roads, obviously, we have to be proactive in building roads and systems. You know, transportation systems that will be able to serve those new developments rather than. Just, you know, oh, we need those. No, we have to be proactive in that and plan in parallel along with those developments. So that we don't have, have gridlock any worse than we have currently right now on May.
Thank you. A little easier questions or question, excuse me, next. Um. What is the population of the city of Battleground and um, when was it incorporated?
I know it is twenty-three thousand. Uh, I honestly do not know when we became incorporated. It's been incorporated as long as I have lived here. I've been here twenty-three years. And as far as I know, it's been incorporated that long.
Okay, thank you. Uh, last question. Um, you were here tonight. You heard uh, the discussion on uh, proclamations. Yes. And everything that revolved around that. We do lots of proclamations, uh, proclamations for Black History Month, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month, Autism Awareness Month, Law Enforcement Month, so on and so forth. Given that, if you're on council and um, you have to vote for, for example, the uh, Pride Awareness Month. Proclamation, how would you have voted and explain your vote?
I would have voted for the proclamation. I am not without sympathy to people that have, may have had some problems with that. Out in our, you know, our citizens. The way I was raised, I was raised that there was a problem with, with that lifestyle, but. I don't, the way I see it is. I have to respect people for where they are. This is a civil organization. This isn't a religious organization. This is a civil government. And they are all members of our society and. They all play a part in our society and the, and the function of our society. So therefore, yes, I would have voted for it and I would vote for it again.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Davis, the time is twenty thirty-seven and thirty seconds, if you will.
Thank you. Um, first, thank you, Mr. Dingman, for stepping up and applying and um. Couple of those questions that were asked by the mayor were submitted by me and so you answered what I. Felt was important. So I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Um, Mr. Bowman, the time, sir, is twenty thirty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Damon, thank you for the opportunity to interview you tonight and for the willingness to step up to um. To go through this process and also to step up and run for council. As someone who will be part of the budget process, um. If, if you are put in this position tonight, what do you feel would be your priorities and how would you accomplish those priorities?
My priorities are again, going to be making sure that the developments that go into this city. Are consistent with what's there now, or surrounding areas, and that we hold the developers the high standards. Um, that is very important to me. The other thing that, that I should have mentioned, the third question of the, the uh. From the mayor was, it's very important to me that we do not allow the homeless situation that's happened in Portland. Vancouver and up at my old hometown of Longview to happen here. I have lots of compassion for the homeless. I, I. I give, give, give from our income to help the homeless, but. We don't want to have street camping here. We don't want it to get out of control. So would be a priority for me. To absolutely. Make sure that we have a good plan in place to compassionately care for those that need it. But not let the, the city go downhill like we see in Portland.
Thank you. Um, let's, let's stay on that same subject then. And as a counselor, your neighbors. Will often bring complaints to you. Let's say a neighbor complains about homelessness in your neighborhood. Or abandoned vehicles or uh, someone living uh, in a, in an RV in, in a neighborhood on the streets. Um, how would you resolve, how would you handle it to resolve their complaint? Would you complain? What would you do?
By my gut, which isn't how I'd handle it, my gut would be, if I'd met the police chief, I'll go talk to him. But in our system of government, that's not how it works. We have a, we have a council. And we have one person who reports to us and that is the city manager. Anything like that, I would go to the city manager. And um, I would tell the person, first of all, you may need to contact the city manager and I would alert the city manager. That she would be, he or she, whoever it is at the time, would be contacted by that person.
Great, thank you. Um, last question, uh, quickly. Um. As we're growing, what do you believe is our business, biggest expense in the future?
Our biggest expense in the future? In my mind, it's got to be between roads and public safety, i.e. police. And I'd have to think that. If I was given one or the other, I'd rather drive on a bumpy road and be safe than. Then have a nice smooth road and not have a good police force. So I would like to think that the biggest expense we have is on police.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. McCoy, the time, sir, is twenty forty-one.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dingman. Appreciate you showing up and taking the time and showing interest in serving your city. Uh, two simple questions. One, approximately how much time do you think this endeavor will take out of your life?
I think early on. I could put in probably, I bet I'll put in twenty hours a week because I'm. Don't have access to the information or haven't had the time spent in the information, um, digging into things in the city. Ten to twenty hours a week is what I expect to put into it.
And second follow-up question is, do you have that time?
I have that time. I retired from my day job after thirty-five years in the paper industry. I retired as of January thirty-first and I am now available.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rogers, the time is twenty forty-two.
All right. I just have one question. Um, I, I do want to thank you for coming out tonight and putting your name in the hat. Appreciate you taking all our questions. Um, this position is nonpartisan and we are all expect, we are expected to serve all of our citizens. How do you plan to serve citizens who do not politically align with you, who may not look like you, live like you, think like you, or believe like you?
I think it's called being a mature adult. I will talk to anybody. That I'm, I'm open, I'm independent, first of all. I know this is nonpartisan, but I do not belong to any political party. I don't think either party has all the answers. Um, I vote for the person. But as far as, I don't care what you look like. I don't care what your belief is. If you treat me with respect, I will treat you with respect. It's a mutual respect. So I am here for all the citizens of Battleground. If they want to speak to me, of course, if it's an issue I need to take to Aaron, I will take to Aaron. But um. I will be available to every citizen. That is what, that's what I believe my faith, uh, my religious faith calls me to do.
That was it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We will go back through on the second round if needed. Ms. Davis, uh, any questions have come to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, madam. Mr. McCoy, any questions have come to you, sir?
Yeah, I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rogers, have any questions come to you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh. Mr. Damon, we will give you a minute to sum up and then we'll move on. Just want to say, it's, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I never had, never thought I would do this, but with my day job ending, I suddenly have time. And I've got skills from that day job that I think will well-serve the city. Uh, I love this city. I've been here, like I said, for twenty-three years. Um, it's not my hometown originally, but it is now. My wife and I love here, love it here. Um, and we plan to spend. And we plan to spend the rest of our lives here. That's everything I have for you, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure to have you. We appreciate all you've done for the city. We'll ask you to just have a seat and Ms. Beaver, if you'll go grab Mr. Butler. Throw it to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Council will enter an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of, of each candidate. For appointment to elective office. The time is twenty forty-five. And. Ten minutes to start with, with that, everyone?
Yeah.
I don't think we picked seats in ten minutes.
So the time is twenty forty-five. We'll take fifteen minutes and then if more is needed. We'll be back if more is needed.
Oh, yep.
Mr. Butler made it back out.
Thank you.
Got a minute, so we'll.
One minute? Wow.
We'll sit for a minute and then we'll start right at twenty-one hundred.
That's perhaps the best thing I've ever done, right? Well, I wasn't going to bring up the obvious.
The time is twenty-one hundred and we're back. Council, I will open the floor up for nominations. I will remind you that each council member may only make one nomination. And then once the nominations are completed, please fill out your ballot and Ms. Beaver will combine, collect. Okay.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Dan Dingman to the vacant council position number three.
So noted? I don't think we need, we just need a nominee, not a second. We do need a second. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a nomination to nominate Mr. Neil Butler to vacant position number three.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, madam. And so we'll move on. So please fill out your ballot. Of course, it gets a yes or no and a signature, please. Oh, you're picking all three up?
Oh, I recycle.
We'll wait for Ms. Beaver and this camera to figure that out. And then we'll move on.
Wait.
Yes. Was that just, oh, play the Jeopardy thing?
No, brushing my booty.
It's yes, no song.
I know.
Yes, no, it's fine.
No. That's, that's. You could have. You could have more for each. Get somebody.
Stank it. I mean, they'd need to be stank it.
Oh. Yes, ma'am. No, I think I did. So how complex was?
As, as my. As my dear old departed daddy. As my dear old departed daddy used to say, every time I think, I weaken the nation.
I create social stories, so I mean, pencil, check mark.
Way too much for me, man. Been up since three thirty.
That's what, when you asked, when is nighttime for the pillow mill, I'm like, well, it looks nighttime or?
Are we there, Ms. Beaver? I, I will let you announce, please, madam. Mr. Damon, please step up, sir. Ms. Cameron, we'll read the oath of office to you.
Lost all that weight.
Hi.
Hi.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington. I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and law.
And the Constitution and law.
Of the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And will be best together.
Will be the best by each other.
Faithful and perfect.
Faithful and perfect.
The city of Dallas.
The city of Dallas.
Of the state of Washington. Essentially.
Okay, it's not involved, come on up, have a seat. But only as a scientist. Yeah, sign your oath, come on up and grab a seat. Guys, talk about blue containers.
How big the container you want.
Oh, yeah, that's a question.
That's what I thought you were gonna ask.
So, Mr. Damon, you were here at six o'clock, you heard the presentation from the gentleman from Waste Connections, there was seven pages in the back for you to read, sir.
Yes.
Can I have Mr. Damon resend his place in the planning commission first before we conduct any other business, please?
You heard, yes. I hereby resign my position on the planning commission.
Thank you.
Effective immediately.
So, Camer, if you'll call the roll, the, the, the motion was to, option one or option two, I believe. There was an emotion, so, option one was?
Option one involved having Waste Connections keep the weekly service.
Okay.
With the normal recycling bin. And the cost, on average, for each household would be around two dollars and eighty cents, give or take a couple cents.
So, so, option one was pretty much stay where we are with an increase of two eighty-five.
And an intralocal with our own between us and Waste Connections, not involving the county.
Okay?
Correct.
I believe, though, in, in listening, didn't he say we were already paying two, two dollars of the two R I P?
Yes. Yes. Just a moment, sir, let me finish. And option two is that we go to a bi-weekly collection. Which we would hang with the county and just follow along with the county. Is, is that reasonable for everyone? So, Ms. Cameron, as you call the roll, if you will answer one or two is all we're looking for. One or two is all we're looking for. No, this, whatever happens is the way we're gonna roll.
Is, it'll be consensus for us to move forward in either option one negotiating our own contract, option two continuing to join with the counties in our local agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Option one, please.
Option one.
Option one, please.
Two.
Two.
Two. One. One it is, moving on. Administrative reports.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Johnson, find my, my next sheet here. Um, I wanted again to give you guys an update, we've been working on getting some of the reserve funding projects moving forward. One, top of the list was Parks and Recreation update, when we chatted about the reserve projects, it became apparent that we wanted to put some focus on Parks and Recreation. So, we have received the design back for the picnic shelters in McConnell and Coannis, those were two projects that were already budgeted for the twenty-three budget cycle. As we've started thinking about other improvements that we can make that would be visible in the community, a couple of different ideas have surfaced, and I will pull up this picture here. I, I took some time a few weeks ago and kind of did some park surveys, taking the parks plan and looking at the ones that had the biggest issues and maybe have, are the largest parks that serve the, the most variety of our community. Coannis Park came up to, to mind, we have talked about doing, so we have the horseshoe pits over there that had the covers that were in very bad shape that we have taken down. Since those discussions, the horseshoe pits are still in place, but there's also been talk of, you know, could we potentially add some more sports courts and stuff throughout our, our parks? So, one idea I think we could do fairly cost effectively, we have the, the two basketball courts that are basically full court basketball courts at Coannis Park. There are dimensions in the way they lay out, we could fit six pickleball courts within that area, I think we could do that fairly cost effectively as we already have the concrete surface. It would be a matter of, you know, maybe smoothing that out, putting down the, as a paint coating that adds the, the correct surface and then the lines. We could effectively fit six of those there, pretty cost effectively as I indicated, and then, obviously, those basketball courts get used quite a bit, so we wouldn't want to take that away. So, one of the thoughts is adding where the horseshoe pits were putting in a full court basketball with a cover and some lights there, so we're replacing the basketball, it's undercover, and then we're adding the pickleball. So, that is one thing that we kind of thought we could do pretty cost effectively, what we'd like to do is instead of going out to design for that, we would do a design build and add it on to the bid with the two shelters, the one that would replace the Trellis Shelter at Coannis Park and the new picnic shelter at McConnell Park.
Under, under that proposal, you wouldn't have to cut any trees down, would you?
No, I think we can fit that right in where that, those existing covers were, where the, um, the horseshoe covers were. Now, it measures out to kind of fit within that area, we might have to trim some back.
Yeah, that's all I was gonna, as we would trim.
Yeah, I wouldn't want us to cut down those beautiful trees, just to.
What's, uh, what's the reason for changing one, why not just do the pickleballs over there? With cover, I mean, one complaint I've heard about pickleball is sometimes it's noisy, would there be any mitigation with having it indoors, it would be less noisy?
I don't believe so, I think you're gonna get the same amount of noise, I think we just looked at the surface, the size of the surface that we had already there, so we were just looking at cost.
Gotcha, so the basketball court works better over, thank you, that's all.
From two courts to one, but it will be covered.
Yeah.
And horseshoes are goodbye.
Yeah, and we talked about, you know, we could put a horseshoe pit in anywhere in the park, maybe we put something closer to the parking lot or something that wouldn't be covered, but those would be an easy add at any time.
Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Kind of piggybacking on what Mr. McCoy had talked about, that, that's one thing that I would be a little concerned about. I know Lake Oswego shut down some pickleball courts because of the amount of noise, and right on the other side of those trees is, is homes, so how would we mitigate that? Or if it, you know, I'd hate to put in courts and then say, that's too noisy, we're shutting them down. What do we think the, the, do we think that's gonna be a challenge, or have we even looked at that?
I, I would see it, the, the whole park is, is surrounded by homes on, on all four sides. So, whether, whether they're under the trees where the horseshoe pits are now, or where they, where they, they hope to put them, I don't think it would make much difference either way.
But any louder than dribbling a basketball?
Well, and that's one of the things, when I was out there, you know, there was, I was out there on a very sunny Friday afternoon, there was a bunch of people playing basketball, you know, there's, there were kids at the splash park. So, the splash park, the basketball and the playground are all kind of up against that one row of homes, and we have never received any complaints to this date, I can't imagine that, I, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I can't imagine the noise would be too much different. So, um, basically, on this piece, we are just looking, we would need to probably do a budget amendment to bring, bring some of those reserve funds from the general fund to the capital fund to add this to the bid. But we won't know the actual cost until we go out for bid, so I just kind of wanted to get this in front of you guys, see what your thoughts were, if you're okay with us moving forward with adding this to the bid, knowing that we'll come back at a later date for the, for the budget amendment.
And if we move forward on this, how quickly would this be done, do you imagine?
So, we were postponing the, um, the picnic shelter, just so we could get a little bit of the design piece into the bid, and then I think we're ready to go within the next couple of weeks, probably.
Yeah, I would say, what are we, in June, so, yeah, two to four weeks, we would have the package with the extra stuff in it, and we can be out to bid.
So, potential completion by the end of the year?
Easily end of the year, if not fallish.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, procurement is always the issue, the material procurement, I, I'm not aware of anything on these that is gonna be an issue, obviously, if there is, that could delay it, but, um, nothing I can see in here, I'm aware of an issue at this time.
I have one more question, what is the enclosure going to look like?
It will just be kind of like a, a pole building essentially, so it won't have sides, it would just have, have a roof, it would be a roof structure.
And a roof high enough that you can throw a basketball?
Yes.
And we'll model it after the one that was already designed for the picnic shelter.
Okay.
Is the plan to replace the streetlights, the, uh, the park lights, not streetlights?
That we need to do a little bit more discussion on, because there, I don't believe many of them are left, and all of the, the ones that are left in the park are outdated enough that we can't replace the parts anymore, so we need to do full new poles and everything, so.
It's, it's dark there.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't we wrap that into this?
You could. Yeah, if that's, if that's the direction, we could add the lights to it.
I think it would make sense.
And there's kind of, and not just for clarification, there's kind of, to me, two sets, there's, we used to have them around the path, pretty much all of those have been knocked over and gone, and then we have some around, you know, essentially the concrete area, so, if we're given that direction, I'd want to be clear what.
I, I would ask that we, we call them security lights there at the Quanis Building. There are Cub Scouts and there are other scout organizations that meet there in the winter, and of course, it's dark at four thirty. And so, I would suggest that we pretty much keep it on the east end of the park, uh, with the concrete, for now. We can all, we can always go back and look and, and go around the perimeter when the time comes.
So, is there, um, is it, are you guys all good with us moving forward with adding these two projects to the?
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay, um, just to give you guys another quick update, too, we do, we had already two hundred thousand dollars in the twenty-three budget for park improvements. We are working on a few things that will include the bathroom replacements, all the fixtures in the bathrooms at Fairgrounds Park and Coannis. Uh, we're also gonna do the resurfacing of the splash pad, because we have some slippage issues out there. And then, uh, we are working with a vendor to kind of price out and get some ideas on some playground equipment, and I think we can purchase two to three playground structures, whether we either replace ones that are, um, have the end of their lifespan or add to existing parks. I think we'll be able to also get two to three nice play structures out of that to get within the parks this year as well, so that's kind of what we're focusing the, the remainder of that funding on.
Is it possible for twenty-four, maybe, yeah, I don't wanna say twenty-five, for twenty-four, to update the splash pad? To bring it in from the twentieth century to the twenty-first? Since we're twenty-three years into the twenty-first.
I mean, that's something that can be budgeted for, what I might suggest is we're working on the three master plans, they might propose a separate facility, so I would suggest waiting to kind of see how that plays out before we make a decision.
That's November, they come back.
Yeah, the final plan is January, but they're supposed to have kind of the phases of it, and I think maybe even before November.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely on the radar.
Does, does anyone have any discomfort with what she just offered?
No, I think the part master plan had several play structures that noted that they need to be replaced, so I'd just say that we make sure that those are the ones we hit.
Yep. Um, the second project that we talked about moving forward was the street light replacement, we did hear back from CPU and they indicated they can lightly, likely get all those replaced before the end of this year. So, we're also kind of looking to move ahead with that, they said they would order the poles as soon as we have the budget. So, um, we're kind of thinking, we'll come back with a budget amendment, we originally looked at this, because we know we have forty poles that are down. Mark has an intern starting in a couple of weeks, so the, one of their first tasks will be to kind of go through the lighting plan and go out in the field and field check that, we're expecting that we may find a few more that will be down, so, we're looking to bring forward a budget amendment for fifty poles at about, they're about four thousand dollars apiece, so it'd be around the two hundred thousand dollar mark. But, um, we would like to give CPU the, um, the approval to go ahead and order the materials, so that then they could start, they'll, they'll have to prioritize with their work, so it's gonna take them probably the, the remaining time, but we'd like to have the materials on hand so they can start, um, prioritizing that work, so if you guys are good with that.
So, you're, you're looking for two hundred grand?
Yeah, we'll do official budget amendments, but yeah, we, we'd like to get approval to move forward and have them order the, the poles at this time.
What fund will that come out of?
That would be coming out of the reserve, general fund, general fund, yeah.
Did the TBD play, pay for that?
They've already allocated TBD for the preservation work, there won't be any leftover TBD.
Seven hundred thousand dollars already allocated?
It's dependent upon the sales tax that come in, so we have an allocated amount of sales tax that are gonna come in to fund the preservation work that was already planned for.
Okay.
Any issues with giving CPU the go-ahead to move that forward?
No, there, there are, there are dark spots in the city, and it's, it's pretty obvious what's, what's happened.
Um, next, the signal upgrades, uh, we, we are working with the designer to get the equipment needs, and once we have what we need from that, we'll place that order. That one probably won't get completed before the end of the year, just based on getting the, um, the equipment that's needed for those areas, and that does not include the Parkway and Main, that's a, a bigger project that will go into design. So, just heads up on that one, that we will be trying to procure equipment, but it probably won't come in in time.
So, that's the post office?
Yeah. I gotta, do you have?
It was, it was a battery. Yeah, so, city, the city owns five signals, you got one at Safeway, one at Fifth, one at Parkway, um, and then the two on Eden, Grayson, uh, Parkway. They all kind of need different things, so, um, some of it's battery backup. For example, at Grayson Eaton, we need, uh, to get rid of the loops and replace like with radar. At eight or at Safeway, it's, I think, pretty close to done, the one at Fifth needs a new, uh, controller box, um, and things like that, so it's, it's different components kind of at each one, um, to really bring them up so that they function the best they can.
So, other than Parkway, you anticipate having this done by the end of the year?
We would order by this year, but I don't expect the parts to come in this year. I'm, I'm at close to a year for the stuff I ordered for the ATMS project, which is the controllers and those sorts of things, and it's, it's a long wait time.
It will.
So, um, depending on timing with that one and what we find out we need for, um, for materials, that one will come in the budget amendment as well. And then, last but not least, um, we, as you guys approved tonight, the Millenfield and the ADA ramps, uh, mostly coming out of the TBD. Um, that covered the ADA ramps, cracked ceilings, s- where resealing, striping and so forth, that was approved back in February. It did include just a few of the larger pothole repairs, um, one project that, uh, engineering had identified that may be good and visible to the community is doing all the major thoroughfare, thoroughfares and doing pothole repair, and I'll, I'll kind of let Mark talk to this, but, but the amount and the locations.
Yeah, so we, we focused kind of on four primary areas, southwest Twentieth Avenue, northwest Twentieth. Yeah, so we we focus kind of on four primary areas, southwest Twentieth Avenue, northwest Twentieth Avenue, northeast Grace Avenue and northeast Two Hundred and Forty-Ninth Street. Um essentially, the plan was is that after we got all of the projects, the kind of last couple, which you've approved tonight, whatever was left over, we would do as many potholes as we could. We went through and marked all of the most severe potholes. Um and the estimate came out to be about six hundred and twenty thousand. So we don't have anywhere close to that amount left over to do that. So if we use the current budget, we'll get the worst of the worst. If we increase the budget to cover the six twenty, we won't get all of them, but we'll get the worst ones. And I think, you know, those are kind of the streets we get the most calls on, you know, potholes, that sort of conversation. So um that was just an idea we threw out to see if there's interest in trying to get all of those, all the major ones.
I I have interest in funding all of them.
Where would the? Yep, where would the funds come from?
Street fund, yeah.
The street fund?
General fund. Yeah.
So so we have, we have currently how much uh set forth?
So the overall uh street preservation budget's about one point eight. Um with all of the other stuff, we're going to have, I think, about two hundred thousand left over. So to get to the six twenty, we would need four to five.
Need four hundred grand from us?
Yeah, four to, between four and five.
Yes, Jane. Ms. Cameron, do you see the recordings? Pause.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Um I don't have a problem looking at this stuff. I I I mean, as we as we sit here and are kind of, you know, saying, hey, yeah, let's go ahead. I mean, this is I I I forget what you said, the the street, the signal improvements are, but we're talking one point two million dollars roughly to or more, that we're just saying, yeah, let's go ahead and do it. Um that's a lot of money. And I I feel that we haven't really, I mean, we've talked about some of this stuff, but really dug into to this stuff, you know, and before just I hate sitting at the end of a meeting and saying, yeah, let's go spend one point two million dollars without really talking about it.
The the gentleman with the road report, uh when's he scheduled?
He has the first August meeting work session.
Have you seen his report?
Yes.
And in that report, it talks about this?
Yeah, I mean, it rates the entire city.
Well, what's the pleasure? Where where are we heading? They're they're asking for four, four hundred thousand dollars and four hundred thousand dollars will will bring us up to, okay.
Yeah, for those four streets I mentioned, that will take care of all the most severe potholes.
Just the most severe ones or all of them?
The severe ones, like, you know, you'll have two foot by two foot small area that we didn't mark out, but the big serious ones that will take care of those. But I want to make it very clear, it is not every single pothole on that road, it is the severe ones.
So that six hundred thousand figure you gave us is only for the most severe?
Correct, on those four roads.
On those four.
Yes.
Okay, they're they're asking for four hundred grand. Who who wants to start and say they get their four hundred grand?
Are you looking for a motion or consensus?
We'll call it consensus for now.
Yeah, because what we can do on that one is we'll bid it and then we'll have an actual price and we can bring that back to the way we do every other bid and.
So so there there is one more bite at the apple.
Yeah, for this one, yes.
To my left, Mr. Bowman?
I I just, I just hate to sit here and authorize over a million dollars at the end of a meeting without really digging into this. If we need to put more money into roads, then we got to put more money into roads, but that may be at the cost of parks or other things too. So we really need to prioritize, you know, where all this is going to go, or I mean, if we're not, if we're not putting, if we're just fixing some of the potholes, that's over half of our TBD funds to do potholes on four major roads. I mean, that's that's crazy to me that I I mean, I would rather really look at this than just sit at the end of a meeting at nine thirty at night and say, hey, or can we move forward with one point whatever million dollars?
Of course, the the idea is we move forward if it comes back and in July or August. And we say no, I mean, there there's your chance when it's it's actually seven hundred grand or whatever it may be. I I don't want to uh do that. But there there is a, there is a a a second bite at the apple.
This is the cost of neglect, how we have to go back and fix all the stuff that we've been before to fix in the past, and it's just going to keep costing more.
So the people.
It, I mean, I I understand the cost of neglect, but if if there's cost of neglect, then you got to fix the neglect, you can't, you don't get the opportunity. If if I want to have a car, a house, a boat, everything else, but all I can afford is the house, then I I I take the house. And so that's where I'm talking, like, when we're prioritizing, we may not be able to spend four hundred thousand dollars in parks because we got to put it more into roads because we need the roads. So that's why I think we need to look at this more than just throwing it out there.
Okie doke. Folks on my left say yes, folks on my right.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Adding to uh Mr. Bowman, when it comes back, if we give the consensus for more information, it will come back and it will scribe the cost and what we could get for that amount of money. Am I correct in assuming what's going to come to us that we can look at when the paperwork comes back to us? Because all we're saying now is to move ahead that we can see where the money is going to go. We're not saying that we're going to pay for all of that. Is that correct? That is how I'm seeing.
So I guess we could kind of go project by project for the potholes, what we would bring back as an actual bid. So you would have the actual hard number that here's what would get fixed, here's what it would cost from, you know, and you could say, yes, let's move forward with it or no. Um.
And that would be what, Mr. Bowman, is that would that help you to?
Yeah, I.
Or you just want to hold it off?
No, I I I'm fine with that, but I I've always been one on council and Mark, you know this, that when we're going to get bids for pothole repair in August, when every single one of these companies is slam busy, you're paying thirty to forty percent more. Because because they're slam busy, this this is stuff that we should have been dealing with in January, February and March and and planning that and having it already ready to go come April one and and be out there doing it. We waited till August to, you know, it it it's like buying fire insurance after the fire's already come, right? And and that's where we're at, so we're going to pay more for it. That's that's kind of, that's where I'm at with it, Ms. Davis. It's not necessarily the, I I don't, I mean, we've got to fix them, but we always seem to do it when it's going to cost us the most money to do.
On my right, yea, your name. Mr. Cortez?
By moving forward and then we go to further debate.
Mr. Rogers?
Hey.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there you are.
So yeah, just to clarify that, the potholes will come back as a bid. I it sounds like we're okay to have CPU order the poles that will come back as a budget amendment.
Yeah.
Same with the uh the pickleball and the basketball, that will come back once the bid is completed.
Potholes are the only thing that will be left up to 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 a final decision.
Exactly.
One one request that I would have, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
On the lights, the light poles, um if there's a way where we can do like a public service announcement, really push it out to the public. Because am I right to assume that a lot of these lights, why they're down, is either due to vandalism? Maybe DUIs, maybe just a car accident, they hit them and left and it didn't, you know, wasn't responsible? So we can sh- sh- tell the public, hey, we're spending this money, but it's because you're, you know, these.
I have no problem with that.
And maybe add on to that, see something, say something. So if you see it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's uh.
It's real money, that's costing taxpayer dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you see that car speed off, yeah.
Aren't we still getting some money for planes too on some of that?
Yeah, but that's forty.
I know.
We're not getting.
I know, but I mean, we're still going to recoup some.
We recoup a little.
Yeah, if if the person gets caught who hits it, then yes, we get the insurance.
Okie doke. Anything else, Ms. Er.
That concludes administrative reports.
Thank you, madam. Uh council communications.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um I would just like to note by council that we went ahead and paid for um being the parade. City Council and this year, uh we reached out to Parks Department and they want to join us in the parade. Um and so as we did last year, um I will go out and purchase the candy. And if anybody on council would like to chip in, you can contact me and let me know. And if you'd like to be part of the parade, please let me know, the more the merrier. Um but I think it's going to be a really nice opportunity to combine, it's not just council, it's the city battleground, so I'm I'm thrilled. And anybody who wants to participate, please let me know.
That's the fifteenth of July.
Correct. I'm double E N.
Mr. Bowman, I saw your hands.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um council, I I will be sending you guys a letter. Um as the liaison with Fire District Three, um I received a letter this week. They um will be taking action at the uh Ju- June twenty-sixth meeting about the multifamily tax exemption. And um they've reached out and and um to the state and have found that they do not the the money that we would, we would um forgive in the multifamily tax exemption is not spread out over the remaining um taxpayers, it, they lose it. They do not, it it's not like the school district who has a levy and or a bond and, you know, it's a million dollars and it doesn't matter if one person pays it or twenty thousand people pay it, it's still a million dollars. The the district would lose that with the project that we already did and with the project that Mr. Frontbeck came in and talked about. Um the district is is putting a price out there at one point five million dollars that they would lose over the next eight years if we were to do that. Um they are against it. Uh they're they're asking us to to take a look at this um because it does cost them uh quite a bit of money, that's that's almost a ladder truck, um that's definitely a pumper. Uh and they depend on that revenue for the the public safety and it it would go away. So um I will be sending the letter to you guys, um take a look at it, and uh if there's anything that you would like me to relay back to them, let me know, or you can contact them directly. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Uh I do have a few things. Harvest Days, of course, the next meeting, our next meeting is July seventeenth, Harvest Days is fourteenth, that's the Friday night. Uh Car Cruise fifteenth, of course, is Saturday. There is the Fourth of July coming up. I assume the city will start putting out on Facebook notices and and on their website that three one one is the number you call, uh nine one one is not the number you call unless unless your neighbor's house is on fire or something to that effect. Uh the National Night Out is the first Tuesday in uh August. So is the city planning on uh having that this year? So uh that's only roughly two weeks past the our next meeting. Is uh anything going to be required of us other than showing? As in the past, okie doke. Uh you and Mr. Ferrier, along with Mr. Cortez and Mr. McCoy will be gone next week. Who's who's in charge? We we like Ms. Lowry. Mark likes, Mark likes Ms. Lowry as well. Let me just, my pleasure. Thank you. Uh Chief, or actually, Aaron, in the past week, State Patrol came through. Can uh can the city give us just a quick rundown on what State Patrol did and what the city plans to do with the information that they attained from State Patrol?
So, yeah, we, uh great opportunity for the department to get to keep two hundred, well, second, second, they have one group, and now they're back and finding out state way high. Does that and has, has the municipal support to them? Um and they're 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 doing this kind of work throughout the state. What they did with us here, they brought four groups, and one of our officers helped them, who are out in city, there are there are lists of there's a collection of complaints, starting out state plate collection that people call in or online. So we knew where those were, and then we also found city for other places around state and part of the rest. This means that that and some of you probably are familiar with this in the past, but with the postcard warning thing, it's almost like we killed, essentially says that, I mean, three months, but essentially says that if you, if you're the president, you watch that your party, uh that you're doing what's right, so. Um hey, uh just in a nutshell, that we keep track of, W S D keeps track of the druber and their, uh, victims, uh, followed up. Uh let's see what kind of compliance there is, often with with no other action but the warning, you're getting about twenty to thirty percent of clients. Uh those people, so they think, then they'll go, they'll crack by the bins and go back. Uh I think it's a sixty day wait. It's three to twenty thirty percent of time that way. Some vehicles then, uh they don't comply, there's a, the W S P does all the rest of the process. They follow up with some of them at some level with department, but then connect with the owner. So uh for battleground, it's uh it is, our our process is is very simple, we're gonna, we are gonna use placards, the postcard placards, they have, they'll date whether they can put like hours, that's all, it's gonna just say, they're gonna be on. So one of one of those two things happen and uh and then people, there's the spreadsheet, there's the the location address, vehicle and all that, we keep that and send that to W S P, and they do the rest for us. They're great partners that way. They asked them a couple of times, are you sure, so that you'll do all that follow up? I'm not sure. That 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 group is going in.
And then I would follow that up with a question on, have we ever thought about a a mobile license plate scanner? For stolen cars and for out of state type plates?
We had that, and it was not very successful, it didn't buy very.
We we owned one?
We had one for the ramp. It was not very successful, it didn't, it was, it was, it was, I didn't collect statewide, it didn't reach it, just uh uh, it's easier to get access. Not very successful, well.
But that was years ago, stolen cars now are are by the hundreds, not necessarily in in the city battleground, I understand that. But I is you you don't think it's worth the the cost, whatever that cost may be, I have no idea what the what the machine cost, just to have it installed in one car?
It was, it was only about a year.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I don't know if you said it, did you say how many contacts were made or letters left for people? Hundred and sixty-five?
That's that's one percent of the cars in the city. Mr. Bowman, you have a question?
Yeah, we, I just couldn't hear a thing. Chief said, there's no mic on over there.
Oh.
I can start all over, sir.
No, it's fine.
And then I I have had a question, a couple of questions actually from uh citizens about handicap uh activity, parking activity. The sheriff offers that as a as a deal. Is there, there is none in the city. Uh we haven't done it for years. You can walk through our parking lots and see it, uh people have no respect for handicap parking. Is there a possibility? Is there a possibility we can cut a deal with the sheriff to let his folks come into the city? And and do do their business, because I I don't assume the that your, the the police department is interested in that business.
We we are looking to that. That is on our radar, yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh anyone else? Our next meeting is Monday, July seventeenth. The study session begins at six and the regular meeting, of course, is at seven. See you then.